Good evening, I'm Bernard Green. Last Wednesday at the Select Board's organizational meeting, I was elected Chair of the Board. I'm accepting both congratulations and condolences. At that meeting, I thanked Mr. Kleckner and members of the Select Board, particularly Mr. Frankel, who placed me in nomination with some very kind and eloquent words. I'd also like to indicate that at the Tuesday, May 7th election, our old Fernandez was elected as our newest member of the Select Board. Welcome to the Select Board.
Thank you, thank you.
It's an honor to be elected Chair of the Select Board in this period of challenge, but also a period of great opportunity for the town of Brookline. First, our challenges. Our challenges still include overcrowding in our public schools and inappropriate learning spaces that have the biggest impact on children with disabilities. We must fix those problems despite the, in my opinion, very unfortunate loss on May 7th of Question 1. We also face the challenge of resolving the divisions in our town that in unnerving ways reflect the divisions that we are seeing nationally in America. Those divisions, like on the national level, express themselves many times in rigidity, absolutism, and self-righteousness, oftentimes expressed by people who may be motivated by laudable goals, very laudable goals. In making that observation, I accept that I, and all of us, must look in the mirror and make sure that we don't exhibit such ways of thinking also. It goes both ways. In my opinion, those divisions are part of the reason Question 1 went down to the deep. We are all in our corners and unable to look beyond narrow interests and the belief that we are right, end of story. I also think, and bear with me here, Question 1 went down in an avalanche of, in my view, half-truths, rigid absolutisms, narrow self-interests, and demonizing of this board for, quote, "bundling" the question. Okay, I got that off my chest. Let's move forward. And move forward we must, because there were plenty of mistakes made by this board, the school committee, and the Yes side, as well as other mistakes in the campaign. But all of that is water under the bridge. At the end of the day, we still have problems with school overcrowding and inappropriate learning spaces for children. To solve those problems requires stepping back, taking a deep breath to open our minds, and carefully putting all of the necessary pieces together to come up with a town-wide solution to these problems that continue to be with us. So finally, our opportunities. My challenge as a Chair is to work with the rest of the Select Board, the school committee, organizers of the Yes campaign, and organizers of the No campaign, and others, to approach these challenges thoughtfully, carefully, prudently, and intelligently. I will try to rise to that challenge with humor, a calm temperament, and an open mind. We all have an opportunity to do that, despite the election results, because of the committed, highly-educated, and active residents of our town, who we expect will work with the Select Board, the school committee, and others in good faith to find innovative solutions to our school challenges and move Brookline forward. That's my statement, read it in part at the organizational meeting, and I want to just put that in the record. So, our next item on the agenda is, or the first item on the agenda, is any announcements from the Select Board of recent and/or upcoming events of community interest?
Um, yes, we want to make everyone aware that the celebration, commemoration of the opening of 50 years ago of the John F. Kennedy Birthplace is happening on May 29th, and we will hear more about that because there's a proclamation on our agenda, but I wanted to, in case people leave earlier, I wanted you all to know that it's not. It's open to the public. It's from 10:00 to 12:00 in the morning at the JFK Birthplace on Beale Street on May 29th. Did I say that? May 29th.
Any others?
I have two. One, The Bridle Path is having a demonstration this Saturday. For more information, you can either contact me or look to our town website. The other thing I want to mention is on June 5th, this board recently got behind a climate change summit that will be happening at Coolidge Corner School, starting at 6:30 PM.
Remind people about the Cherry Blossom Festival this weekend on May 18th at the high school from noon to 4:00 PM. We'll be celebrating the coming of the cherry blossoms, aided by all the rain we've gotten over recent weeks. So, I will plan on attending, and I look forward to seeing others there.
Okay. I've got one, too. The People's Cafe to benefit Bijan, that is the Boston Immigration Justice Accompaniment Network, will be taking place on the 18th of this month at the First Parish here in Brookline, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Encourage you to attend that.
Great, thank you. So, next item on the agenda is public comments. I see that we have 10 individuals who'd like to make public comment. We had one comment via email that the Select Board members received in their package or put at their table. What I'd like to do, since we usually set aside 15 minutes for this, I'm willing to be a little more flexible today, even though we have a really, really packed agenda. We may be going deep into the night at today's meeting. So I'd like to give people three minutes. If anyone not on this list would like to make a comment at the end of the meeting, we'll take comments at that time. But again, please limit your comments to three minutes, and like Neil Wajcinski used to say, if you have a comment to make that someone else has already made, don't feel shy about saying, "I agree," and move on, and let other people have their say. So, I'd like to start off with Daniel Goldberg. And please identify yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dan Goldberg. I've had the privilege of appearing before various of the boards of this town dealing with issues regarding the ninth school, and I appreciate the chairman's comments about moving forward. I think that one of the things that's very important about that is not captured in a statement that sunshine is the best disinfectant, and I've asked for a few moments to address the board publicly, and I will submit a letter at the conclusion of my remarks, so I'll just summarize what's in the letter. It has become clear over the past several days, as a result of materials produced in the pending taxpayers' litigation, that certain information critical to the override vote was intentionally withheld from the public. And although the override vote was defeated, it is important, I think, in order to move forward, to recognize the facts of what happened. On April 15th, three weeks before the override vote, the National Park Service provided an email to special town council and town council stating the views of the National Park Service, which had been sought by special town council since last October, regarding whether the Baldwin North project could go forward consistent with the restrictions that existed on the Baldwin Park land. That email of April 15th stated the views of the National Park Service, that the Baldwin North plan was unlikely to be in compliance with the land and water conservation fund restrictions, and that noncompliance existed regardless of which of the four plans for use of the Baldwin Park were pursued, because the violations arose from the limitations on access to the park that were created by the planned building and the planned use of Oak Street. In short, on April 15th, the town council and special town council had noticed that regardless of which plan for use of the Baldwin Park was going to be pursued, that plan for the school itself and the use of Oak Street would violate the land restrictions under federal law and could not go forward without converting the project. That advice from the National Park Service, as I say, resulted from a request back in October to the NPS, National Park Service, by special town council. That request for information was not disclosed, even at the town meeting last December, when pending issues about land restrictions were downplayed by special town council. Now, the substance of what the National Park Service said was not surprising to those of us who have been advising the town, various boards of the town, of limitations that were placed on the land. It was not surprising also that the National Park Service view was diametrically opposed to the advice special town council had given to the town on this issue, because in 2017 the same thing happened. Special town council said, "Oh, National Park Service is wrong, the staff is wrong, the restrictions only..."
I'll give you time to wrap up.
Thank you very much. So, what was surprising with this document that was produced only in the litigation was that town council and special town council, and no doubt, under their ethical rules, they disclosed this to various representatives of the Select Board and the school committee, that the NPS had actually given a determination on these issues. What's surprising is that that was never disclosed in the three weeks prior to the override. Now, as I say, everybody knows the override, thank you, everybody knows the override failed, but the fact of this nondisclosure, the fact of withholding this information from the public, is something that I think everybody in the town, both the public and members of the boards who were not, themselves were not told about this, should be very mindful of going forward in terms of how these issues are dealt with.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I...
I'm sorry to cut you off and not give you a chance to actually fill in additional details, and that is the response that we got from the state Executive Office of Environment and Energy Affairs, which...
Well, that also was not disclosed, Mr. Chairman, and this clears the action to this memo, which is the NPS...
Mr. Name, Neil? Thank you.
Turning the page somewhat. Good evening, Chair Green and the Select Board. I'm C. Scott Mannion, a town meeting member from Precinct 10, and importantly for tonight, a dad of a kindergarten near a Driscoll school, and a dad of a daughter who's going to enter pre-K next year at Driscoll. I have to admit that I'm usually here for topics that will say a somewhat more specialist nature, where I think that my technical expertise is going to offer something to the town, and so I'm quite gratified to be here tonight on a topic of broad interest. And I stand here before you, representing quite a large number of my fellow citizens in this town. I have an open letter to the Select Board, signed by 422 folks who care deeply about schools and about the Driscoll Four Project in particular. And to save you the time of hearing individually from all of them, could everyone who's here for the Driscoll Project raise your hand? Quite a lot of you. Folks who are in favor of a four-section Driscoll school, please raise your hand. And folks who are in the Driscoll community that might be slightly newer, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. So, this makes my heart warm. So, I'm going to just briefly go through the open letter. You folks have received a copy already, and I'll, just not to kill too many trees, I have sent you this in PDF, other than giving you all 35 pages of this. But the basic points, briefly, we wish to express our support for a four-section Driscoll school project, and urge the Select Board in particular to take steps to ensure that the project is continued and that its fall 2022 opening is not delayed. Next paragraph in the open letter goes into some detail about the bundling, but I, in particular, wish to sort of move past that. People have sliced and diced the election results in various ways to say different things, and that was my purpose of starting the open letter, was to actually take a direct poll to the community and say, you know, was this a referendum on four Driscoll or something else? And I think the overwhelming result has been that the four Driscoll project does indeed have broad support from the community. The expansion of the Driscoll school from three sections to four won't solve all of our enrollment problems in the town, but it will add 185 student seats by fall of 22, which is an important first step towards addressing overcrowding, a first step, I hope sincerely, to be followed by Driscoll, and then other steps. And in particular, we urge the following steps to be taken. So, a new override election to be scheduled before fall town meeting. In my discussions with various parties, we have unspent funds in the original allocation from December's town meeting for schematic design, which we could use to ensure that the project is not delayed by delaying the override to that date, and that the Select Board recommends favorable action on the resolution to this effect, which I am going to be making at town meeting next week. Thank you very much. I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you. Beth Gilligan?
Thank you, Scott, and I do agree with everything he said, but I'll add a little bit, and just thank you all, because I've spoken or emailed with all of you this week, and you've been really responsive. You pick up your phone more easily than I do these days with all the phone calls going around. But I'm a Driscoll parent. My daughter's in kindergarten there. I also am a mom of a three-year-old, so we have a long road ahead in the school system. I was a supporter of the Yes campaign. I knocked on doors, I wrote postcards, I emailed my daughter's class, I stood at the polls, and, you know, we covered this ground a little bit. There was overwhelming support for Driscoll when I was talking to people. The Baldwin question is obviously what people got caught on, even Driscoll parents in these cases. But I don't think that should be misconstrued as a sign that Driscoll parents don't care, because we really, really do. We're concerned about our kids' future, and also the town schools, the overcrowding issue. And I think, you know, right now, as you said, don't dwell on the past, but think about the future. And I think we have a plan for Driscoll that everyone sitting behind this table seven days ago was 100% behind, and I would love for it to move forward and not be delayed. As Scott said, it doesn't solve the overall overcrowding issue, but it does really, really help. 185 additional students is not nothing. And we also, excuse me, my allergies have been killing me. We also have an aging building that is badly in need of repair. I think you guys are aware of a lot of these things, that HVAC systems are basically being held together by ducts, is our understanding. My kindergarten is open until 10:15 in the morning. We're not inclined for accessibility. The gym is inadequate in size. There are 24 kids in my daughter's kindergarten class. I think at least a third of them are English language learners. That's a huge strain on the teacher and the students. And we have momentum now, and you do have a Driscoll community behind you. I think it's a lot more palatable for taxpayers, it's a smaller tax hit to stagger it. We do it one school at a time. I know it's not the entire puzzle. There are other pieces to figure out, but we have a strong piece in place right now, and I hope you don't leave our kids in the muddle and don't look at this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCloudland?
Hi, I'm Nicole McCloudland. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 11, and my daughter will be in Driscoll in 2020, so next year. I will say, as a town meeting member, conditions at Driscoll is probably the thing I've heard about most from my constituents. So, I'm here representing my interests as a parent, but also what I've heard from everyone in Precinct 11 more than anything else. I, like Beth, also got on board with the Yes campaign and have done a lot of thinking since the election about what people who are resistant to Driscoll have said, because I understand the concerns and hesitations. But in spite of that, I have not been able to convince myself that the back-to-the-drawing board, stop-and-wait plan makes sense, and I think that's from following so closely the Driscoll process that Susan Mufickoff helped with, and the community buy-in that we got from that, and recognizing what are our alternatives. I've heard in talking to a lot of people who want to stop and wait, well, maybe we go back to a Driscoll three-section plus, because we know it needs renovation. There's no question that something needs to be done at Driscoll. There's going to be some investment that happens at Driscoll. And then I've heard others say, maybe we need a five-section school at Driscoll. And I will say, from following the Driscoll process so closely, I can't imagine it being likely that we end up with either of those scenarios. I know everything is a possibility, but three sections is going to be overcrowded already. We're already overcrowded at Driscoll. Five sections is going to be so beyond maxed out for the site and so opposed by the community that I think it's going to, any school committee will likely decide that that's not the best alternative. So what does that leave us with? A four-section Driscoll, which, believe it or not, we have great plans for already. So it's been hard for me to understand why we would stop, we take more time, delay construction to arrive back where we already are, which is a project that is well-designed, has community buy-in. I mean, it's not worth underestimating how important it is that we actually have a community saying, "Yes, please put a school here." I mean, what we've seen historically is this uphill battle, trying to get a school, especially expand a school or expand space in a school community in Brookline. In Driscoll, we're saying, "Yes, like, bring a school here. We will send our kids to school at a construction site for two years. We will go to a four-section school when that is pretty maxed out for the site. We'll deal with the parking, we'll deal with the traffic, we'll add kids." Like, we are enthusiastically saying, "Please," like, "We invite you in." And I think it would be a missed opportunity to not take advantage of that momentum.
Please clarify.
And I do think it's worth noting, when you have an acute need, like we do, you act where you can. And let's not let the, insofar, as what we've done so far, inability to solve a town-wide problem that has, we've been trying to solve for 10 years, let's not tie a really good part of that solution to a process that we haven't been able to achieve so far. So, on behalf of the people that I've talked to, I'd really encourage you to consider supporting Driscoll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessie Gray?
Thank you, Jessie Gray. Town meeting member from Precinct 10, and a parent of three Driscoll boys, two of whom don't actually go to Driscoll yet, but they will. And... Oh, sorry. So, I wanted to offer congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman, and also to you, Mr. Fernandez. Fantastic.
Thank you.
I'm a runner, and a lot of times I plan out my route, but if I don't have a phone and I don't have a map, sometimes it's just as effective to just start running, just taking steps in a positive direction. Now, after the last Tuesday's election, one week ago, the next morning, I walked through the halls of Driscoll, and the community at Driscoll was devastated by the results of the election. And we were devastated, and we saw the continuing impact immediately. Children are working at desks in the hallway, kindergartners starting shortly after 10:00 in the morning, having lunch in the cafeteria that's too small. We did some soul-searching at Driscoll in the last week, and we realized that the consensus that we had to move forward with a four-section Driscoll is still a consensus now. It's especially a consensus when you actually walk through the school and talk to the workers who are there. There's an overwhelming agreement at Driscoll that a four-section Driscoll that would relieve some of the town's overcrowding, maybe a third, would be a great step in the right direction. And we've done some soul-searching, and we've realized that it's also on us. We understand, we bear some responsibility. We are extremely grateful to the leadership from the board, from the school committee, and from all of the organizers who have fought for this plan for a four-section Driscoll. But it's still a shovel-ready plan, and we are prepared to redouble our efforts. We understand, again, that part of that responsibility is ours, and we can do more. At Driscoll, we're ready, and we hope that you'll keep an open mind in the coming days and weeks to taking a chunk out of this problem with a solution that is cocked and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Loscazo? Pardon me if I...
My name is Kimberly Loscazo. I am a kindergarten mom of a Driscoll little girl. I also have an eight-month-old. I was an avid Yes supporter. I was out there, wearing my eight-month-old, getting, trying to get people to vote, trying to get this to pass. I do believe in a three-part solution, but I also don't believe in just throwing it all out now that the override did not pass. I think all of the people before me are much more eloquent than I, much more articulate than I, but I want to come up here just to give a voice to the people that might be nervous to talk and might not have the right words, but to show that we have heart and presence in this fight for a four-section Driscoll. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Sadman, I think it says?
Martin Solomon.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, my bona fides are that I've been a physician practicing in Brookline for 42 years. I'm a grandfather of two students at Driscoll, and I started at the Driscoll School in 1954 and graduated in 1962. So you can imagine how excited I was when my grandchildren attended the school. The first time I stepped into the school, I was appalled at the condition of the school. There are rooms there that are exactly the way they were when I left in 1962. The floors are sagging and bouncing. I was ashamed of it. Every day I go into that school, I am embarrassed, as a taxpayer in the town of Brookline, that we can't do better than this, and it's not going to get cheaper the longer we wait. It's going to get more expensive with every day. We need to grasp the solution we have in hand and move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Rosson?
Good evening. I'm Linda Rosson, town meeting member, Precinct 14. I want to congratulate the new chair and select person. My children did not attend the Driscoll school, they went to HEAT, but my oldest son is a former Driscoll kindergarten teacher, and in fact, he taught the grandsons of the previous speaker. I worked as a B-para-professional at Driscoll for eight years, and I was delighted when I heard that the plan for a new school involved demolishing the old one. We routinely wore our gloves, hats, and coats indoors during the winter in pre-K due to the inadequate heating system. Tonight, I am here to ask you to please bring back the four-section Driscoll project as a separate ballot question as soon as possible. The proposed four-section Driscoll has wide support in the Driscoll community and beyond. It is a beautiful plan to replace an old failing building and create more green space for the students and for the neighborhood. To say that we cannot build Driscoll without Baldwin or some other ninth school is nonsense. If you had split the ballot questions and Driscoll had passed, even if Baldwin had failed, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We would be moving ahead with Driscoll. Driscoll families need and deserve a new school. Thank you.
Thank you. My top, oh, my top will send in a comment via email. Linda, Lisa Noack-Rofens.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. I haven't participated in a community forum in a while, so it's really nice to be back here on this topic, which is so close to my heart. I was also a Yes supporter, but I have to say, and I can't say this strongly enough, that the failed override is not indicative of lack of support for Driscoll. I actually, I have three kids, which means I spend a lot of time on playgrounds, talking to other parents and adults, and it's a shame that a lot of them can't be here tonight because this timing couldn't be worse for people with young kids. The, every day, I have a first grader at Driscoll. I go to pick him up with my baby on my back and my four-year-old next to me, and we get bumped into tables, into the nurse's bed that's in the hall. The hallways are not wide enough for the number of people who have to pass through there. My four-year-old has been knocked over a number of times in the two years that I've been picking up my young child. It's not right. I've often delayed when I go to pick him up because I can't make it through the halls with a stroller. We all know that Driscoll needs renovation. It's in horrible condition. The temperatures, when it gets warm outside, anyone who's stepped in that building knows that is not conducive to learning. I taught in a high school for 10 years in a building that was falling apart. They finally renovated it, but during that time, in the warmer months, kids fall asleep when it gets warm. Kids cannot learn if they're sleeping in the classroom because the infrastructure is failing them. I'm bummed that the override didn't pass. I know that there needs to be many parts to this solution, but there's no solution that doesn't already involve Driscoll's renovation, and it would be silly to not keep this ball rolling on this plan that's already started. The building is failing, and it has been for a long time. How many more years does it need to be failing? How many more years do four-year... still going to get voted through anyway. The No campaign was very good about confusing people on what they were actually voting on. The support for Driscoll is there, I can assure you that. And the last thing that I want to say is that my kid's in first grade at Driscoll right now, but we've actually moved, and we won't be at Driscoll anymore. I have no horse in this race, but this is still something I'm willing to fight for as both a parent, a taxpayer, and as a former educator. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker, Rachel Wilson.
Good evening. I think almost everyone you've heard from this evening has been a member of the Driscoll community, and it's right and proper that their voices should be the loudest and fairest tonight because their interests are really at stake tonight. But I wanted to speak to you as someone outside of the Driscoll community. I don't have a child at Driscoll. My son is a first grader at Pierce School. Also, most of the people you've heard from tonight have been active supporters of the Yes campaign, and I was not. I was an active supporter of the No campaign, and I want you to hear from people on that side of the story. I am urging you, as a parent of a child at another Brookline school, and as an active supporter and campaigner for the No campaign, please, please, allow us to vote on the Driscoll Four measure. I would support it with all my heart. All of my neighbors would support it with all of our hearts. As actively as I campaigned for No, I would campaign in favor of Driscoll Four. In fact, I feel a very deep moral obligation to do that because I spoke to my neighbors, many of whom are Driscoll parents. I live in the Driscoll Pierce buffer zone, and I said, please vote No because I believe Baldwin is not the right thing for us, and I promise you, Driscoll will come up for a vote, and we will do everything that we can to pass it. And they said, I trust you. I trust you as members of the Select Board. Please let us vote us on this. It's the right thing for Driscoll, it's the right thing for Brookline, and I also think it's the right thing for Pierce. I want to send a strong message to the state that the people of Brookline want to invest in education, and I think that's very important to winning the state's continued cooperation in the Pierce renovation effort. And so, on behalf of all of these communities, please, I ask you, let us work together to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to our miscellaneous calendar. First item is... Okay, a question of approving minutes of April 23rd and April 30th of this year. Any corrections? I've given Kate a couple corrections earlier. No? On favor of April 23rd, 2019, please say aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Question of approving minutes of April 30, 2019. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of approving and executing contract, PW 19-10, in the amount of $1.243 million with National Water Main Cleaning Company in connection with Park C of Sanitary Sewer Manhole Sewer System Rehabilitation Project.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Russell.
I guess I could empty your room.
Yep.
Further, I get Fred Russell, Water and Sewer Director for the town of Brookline. I'll be very brief, just giving an overview. If you recall, I was here in April on a similar contract. We are in year two of a 16-year proposed CIP for sealing and lining our, what, I'm sorry, sewer mains and sewer manholes in an effort to eliminate or reduce infillin infiltration, which is the extraneous groundwater that gets into the system, which in turn we pay for when it flows to Deer Island and the very charges of that. So we're sealing the water, I mean, the sewer mains and the sewer manholes. Last month, I was in, because year one, we actually put one contract out to bid, by one contract, to seal both the mains and the sewer manholes. What we decided to do this year was to separate them out, and I believe, if you recall back last month, when we actually did the bidding and looked at the unit pricing, we were able to save about $900,000 in sealing the line, the sewer lines, by doing it in-house, the administration part. I am proud to say that this next phase, which is the sealing of the manholes, based on the price we got compared to last year, we were able to save in excess of $700,000. So between the two, it's roughly about $1.6 million by bidding them out separately as opposed to the first year.
That's real money.
That's real money, exactly. So with that, I respectfully ask the Board if you would approve the contract with National Water Main Cleaning Company in the amount of $1.243 million.
Any questions?
So I believe the contractor for the first phase of this project is different than the low bidder this time.
That's correct.
Do we have previous experience with National Water Main Cleaning Company?
We don't, but we check references, the reference check. We actually had them provide material testing that they used to seal the manholes, and they passed.
Any other questions? I move approval of the contract as indicated by Mr. Russell. Ms. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Chair votes yes.
You're doing a good job with the names, though.
Do something right. Okay, a question of approving extra work order number four in the amount of $94,500 with Northeastern Tree Service related to contract, PW 17-03, Upkeep of Trees and Related Works. Ms. Galantine?
Good evening. Erin Galantine, Director of Parks and Open Space. The town of Brookline has forestry contractual services. This is a critical part of our core work that we provide for the town, and we renew this contract every year. This contractor provides emergency tree response, hazard and structural pruning on our streets, our parks, and our public grounds. This is an extra work order in the amount of $9,500, $94,500, and it is to take us through the end of this year on work that will be completed on the streets, the school grounds, parks, and also Walnut Hill Cemetery.
Any questions? I move approval of the extra work order number four. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Although, while I have you here, I had a call...
Chair votes aye.
Is the Brookline Reservoir open for people to kind of utilize? I wasn't sure how to answer a question whether or not it was closed for the season.
The Brookline Reservoir Park is closed, fully closed and under construction. So their contractor has mobilized. We have work happening at the gatehouse, happening all around the perimeter. There have been divers in the reservoir itself, and they've been doing some work within the gatehouse and the valves. So it is currently closed for public safety and will remain so until project completion. We're estimating it will reopen spring 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
Unfortunate.
But necessary.
Well, yes, necessary. I'll have to walk around Jamaica Pond. Okay, question of approving the request by the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, the amount of to paint a Pride Crosswalk on Washington Street at Thayer in support of LGBTQ Pride Month. Ms. Starr?
Hi, Caitlin Starr. I'm the Assistant Director in the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. In accordance with the town's commitment to support a welcoming environment by encouraging cooperation, tolerance, and respect among and by all persons who come in contact with the town of Brookline, and by advancing, promoting, and advocating for human and civil rights through education, outreach, and advocacy, the staff of the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, joined by the Department of Public Works Transportation Division, in recommending that the town join our colleagues in municipalities in Massachusetts, as well as throughout North America, in proclaiming the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month, and to demonstrate this commitment publicly through a painting of a Pride Crosswalk. That is all. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Fernandez?
I'm wondering if, so this is great, by the way. Thank you for bringing this to us. I wonder if there's consideration of, if this will be the traditional sort of five-color Pride flag, or there's a more modern flag that includes black and brown colors to indicate sort of racial inclusion within the LGBTQ community, if that's come up.
I believe that we were, you've got a pink situation.
So, the examples in most communities are the traditional colors of the Pride flag. If the desire of the Board has had the additional colors, so as long as we have the space within the white bars that we have to maintain, it wouldn't be an issue. It would have our support.
Why Washington and Thayer Street? Is there some symbolism in that particular intersection?
The vast majority of places that have done this have done it outside their city halls or the town halls, and that's the most prominent location on one of our main thoroughfares, directly outside the housing of the town government.
Let me ask Mr. Fernandez, is there a standard color pattern that includes black and brown colors, or is that something that people just add to the standard?
Yeah, it's actually something that Philadelphia included in their Pride flag now. The one that flies at their town hall includes the black and brown covers.
Your city hall.
City halls. Great.
Philadelphia, careful.
That's why I brought it up.
I'd like to move that we approve this subject to expanding the color range, the color palette of white and color, since the black and brown is just tremendous. Does that create a problem? I can't imagine that it would.
Nope. Like I said, provided that we have the space within the white bars, we're able to accommodate that.
Any other questions? Okay. One question, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, question of Ms. Galantine again. Question of authorizing the Select Board to enter into a contract with Green Play LLC in the amount of $79,995 for consultant services for an athletic field needs assessment and master plan.
So, the Park and Recreation, the Park and Recreation Commission, the Parks and Open Space Division of the Department of Public Works, and the Recreation Department are incredibly enthusiastic to embark upon this athletic field needs assessment and master planning study. This will be an update from the strategic plan that was published in 2006, and it will revisit all of the town's athletic field assets, look at all of our partnerships, both in-town and in neighboring communities in terms of use of athletic fields, and do a needs analysis on all of the recreational programs, school programs, including high school athletics and community needs. What we found is there is a tremendous deficit in access to athletic field space, which leads to overused athletic fields and foreplay conditions. This is a tremendous opportunity for us to work with all of the user groups, to renew and expand upon partnerships, and come up with recommendations for both the short term and the long term.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. We've received an email from a Town Meeting Member in Precinct 8, Mike Tofol, who is concerned about the length of time that this study is going to go on. So, I'm wondering if you could respond to that. He asks that it be completed by February 28th of 2020. No, I'm sorry. His concern is, is that you've specified it would be February 28th, 2020, but there are certain problems with that. He said the result should be critical input to ongoing decisions about field renovations, school renovations, Driscoll Pierce DHS, and new site planning. So, I'm wondering if you could respond to that.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with Mr. Tofol. He actually provided some valuable input when we were putting together the request proposal, and he is eager to be involved in the process. We have a task force meetup of the entire Park and Recreation Commission, representative from the school committee, from the planning board, from the Green Space Alliance, and we're going to have a series of public meetings. We think that's an incredibly important and critical part of this process, and also ultimately the validity of the recommendations for this community. So that will take some time. There's a huge amount of data that we need to get through. We're looking at our own data, but then we're comparing this to regional and national models, and we're doing it, we're performing a statistically valid survey through a third party as part of this assessment, and that also takes a couple months to actually get out, get all the results for them to synthesize, give back to us, and have that as part of what we present to the public. So while, if we can, if there's any possibility for us to move that process along, we would love to do that, but I don't want to risk the quality of the report and the outcome, you know, in order to do so. So I think that the timeline that we've put forward is reasonable, and our consultant is in agreement with that.
So let me just follow up and ask. He's concerned that you may be making some ongoing and critical decisions prior to this date. I'm wondering whether you have a response to that? Are there critical decisions being made without this study?
So we have information right now in terms of what we understand the needs to be. I think that, I really don't want to speak for Mr. Tofol, but I think specifically, there's the conversation of synthetic turf versus natural turf.
Right.
Potentially, maybe he thinks that this report would change the outcome of Cypress Athletic Field. It's our opinion that we've been given our direction regarding Cypress Playground and Cypress Athletic Field. So that's the only project that I can think of right now that is kind of in the queue for construction that would start spring 2020.
Right. Yes. He does express his dismay that it won't be turf, at least part of it. Just to make sure everything's out on the table here.
Yeah, and there are certainly others as well that are concerned with that.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. His concern is, is that you've specified it would be, it's, it's February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty, but, um, there are, uh, certain problems with that. He said the result should be critical input to ongoing decisions about field renovations, school renovations, fiscal, PHS, and new site planning. So, I'm wondering if you could respond to that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm very familiar with, um, Mr. Tofol. He actually provided some valuable input when we were putting together the request, the proposal, and he, um, is eager to be involved in the process. Uh, we have a task force meetup of the entire Park and Recreation Commission, representative from the school committee, from the planning board, from the Green Space Alliance, and we're gonna have a series of public meetings. We think that's an incredibly important and critical part of this process, and also ultimately the validity of the recommendations for this community. So, one, that will take some time. There's a huge amount of data that we need to, um, get through. We're looking at, uh, our own data, but then we're comparing this to regional and national, um, uh, models, and, uh, we're doing it, we're performing a statistically valid survey, uh, through a third party as part of this assessment, and that also takes, uh, a couple months to actually get out, get all of the results for them to synthesize, give back to us, and have that as part of what we present to the public. So, while, um, if we can, if there's any possibility for us to move that process along, we would love to do that, but I don't wanna risk the quality of the report and the outcome, um, you know, in order to do so. So, I, I think that the timeline that we've put forward is reasonable, and our consultant, uh, is in agreement with that.
Um, so let me just follow up and ask. He's concerned that, um, that you may be making some ongoing and critical decisions, uh, prior to this date. I'm wondering whether, uh, you have a response to that? Are there critical decisions being made without this study?
So, we have, um, information right now in terms of what we understand the needs to be. I think that, um, I really don't wanna speak for Mr. Tofol, but I think specifically there's the conversation of synthetic turf versus natural turf.
Right.
Potentially, uh, maybe he thinks that this report would change, uh, the outcome of Cypress.
Correct.
Athletic field. It's, it's our opinion that we've been given our direction regarding, uh, Cypress playground and Cypress athletic field. So, that's the only project that I can think of right now that is kind of in the queue for construction that would start spring twenty-twenty.
Right. Yes, he, he does express his dismay that, uh, that it won't be turf, at least part of it. So, just, just to make sure everything's out on the table here.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and there, and there are certainly others as well that are, that are concerned with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, question of approving, of authorizing the Select Board to enter into a contract with Green Play, um, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair of both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, then secondary, uh, secondary vote, or, uh, subpart is request for authorization to use the Boston Athletic Association Recreation Fund trust fund for this project. You wanna tell us now on that, any, the money to set aside from the Boston Marathon?
Correct. And, um... It's, it's a, uh, it's, it's a, it's a fund, a special fund that takes the, the annual contribution from the Boston Athletic Association, and, uh, we have been using it for one-time purposes, uh, for recreation or another, uh, community events, and we're, as you may know, we're using it for the racial equity consulting that's coming up. There is sufficient money available for this project.
So, um, any other questions? All in favor, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair of both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, question of accepting a grant from the Cambridge Health Alliance in the amount of three thousand dollars. Funds will support Health and Medical Coordinating Coalition efforts. Mr. Jeff.
Good evening, sir.
Sorry.
I'm gonna give you something real fast.
Well...
Appreciate it.
So, Medical Reserve Corps, just in case you don't know, anybody listening, um, what I handed you was a flyer called MA Response. We're always recruiting for new members. Um, MRC, with the limited funds we do receive, which is three thousand, do a lot of activities that include, we have with the Boston Marathon, we have a few MRC volunteers there, and various other activities. But I wanna make a special note tonight, um, that we received an award from the Department of Human Services for community preparedness and resilience. Um, so the Brooklyn MRC was recognized for that.
So...
Congratulations.
Kudos to Cheryl Snyder and her staff.
Yeah, the department. Any questions? Um, wrote on the authorization of accepting a grant from the Cambridge Health Alliance, uh, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you, Dr. Thank you. Okay, we have a bunch of, um, temporary all kinds beverages, non-sales licenses, uh, to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum. Friday, I'm not gonna read them, uh, read the entire, uh, I guess I can't. Friday, May seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, for an awards reception from six to, uh, ten-thirty PM. Saturday, May eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, for a wedding reception from five PM to eleven PM. Wednesday, May twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, for an annual car club dinner from five PM to ten PM. Friday, May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, for a fiftieth birthday party from five-thirty PM to eleven PM. Been there, done that. Friday, June fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for a wedding reception from five PM to eleven PM. Mr. Franco, are all these in order in terms of police approval?
So, the police department has reviewed all these temporary, um, license applications and sees no reason to deny them.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of granting the following temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to Pine Manor College, four hundred Eighth Street, for Thursday, June thirteen, two thousand and nineteen, for a graduation party from six PM to eleven PM. Saturday, June fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, for a bar mitzvah from five PM to ten PM. Saturday, June twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen, for a wedding from five PM to ten PM. Mr. Franco, you...
So, the police department has reviewed, uh, all of these applications and sees no reason to deny them.
Any questions, comments? Um, all those in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to the Brookline Public Library to be held on Saturday for an event, I guess, be held on Saturday, June fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, for mini golf from six PM to nine PM at three-sixty-one Washington Street. Police okay with that?
Police department has reviewed the application and sees no reason to deny it.
Okay. Um, any questions?
I have been to this event, and it is wicked fun.
Mini golf, huh?
Yeah.
I'll be there. Um, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to Power Rowing LLC. I'm sure Ms. Hamilton's been there, too.
I have not, but I will.
Okay. Be held on Saturday, June first, two thousand and nineteen, for a power rowing Gaia, Gala, from five PM to seven PM at sixty-two Harvard Street, Unit Two.
Police department has reviewed the application and sees no reason to deny it.
And can someone tell me what this is? I, I assume, since you're, you're athletic, I do, you know, certainly not.
I am unaware, uh, I'm unfamiliar with what they do, but I would assume it has something to do with it.
I think it's, uh, a, a class, a fitness class, that, uh, a portion of the, uh, admission charge goes to, uh, charity.
Uh, any other questions? Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Um, Ms. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to the Coolish Corner Arts Festival Organizing Committee to be held on Saturday, June first, two thousand and nineteen, for the forty-first annual Coolish Corner Arts Festival, from eleven AM to six PM, in the Babcock Street parking lot. Police okay with that? Franco?
Uh, yes, the police department has reviewed the application and sees no reason to deny it.
Okay. Any questions, comments? This is a annual event that's very, very popular, and, um, you know, it's a, a great asset to our community. So, um, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
Uh, Chair votes aye. Question of granting a temporary all kinds beverages sales license to the Alenik, Helenik Association of Boston to be held on Saturday, June first, two thousand and nineteen, for a concert from six-thirty PM to twelve AM at one-sixty-two Goddard Avenue. Um, all, everything in order there?
The police department has reviewed the application and sees no reason to deny it.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of approving the application of alternate manager Nicholas Angela Cola, Jr. and Gary T. Cummings for Alden Castle Corp. in business at Alden Castle, located at twenty Chapel Street. Police, uh, down on that?
Uh, the police saw, uh, no reason to deny, uh, the application for either of these alternate managers.
Uh, any questions? Uh, Mr. Franco?
No.
Vote for approval, Mr. Franco?
No.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought you were answering any questions. Okay. Ms. Heller.
I'm sorry, but could, could I understand?
Which, which topic are we on now? I'm sorry.
Why, Mr. Colonel Cola?
Alden Castle.
Okay, so, there was a, uh, this, this matter was on our prior calendar, and there was, uh, a report that came in late that I think was not ready to be, um, understood by the board. There were some issues raised, uh, but I believe the police department has recommended, notwithstanding those, that these two individuals are eligible for alternate manager. I, I would really caution the board if they're gonna have any discussion about the details that are probably done in executive session because of some privacy issues. So...
And, and the police reviewed all those issues themselves?
There was no reason to. Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
No? Ms. Heller?
Aye.
I'll, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Okay.
Is that a aye?
Come back.
Oh, come back. Ms. Fernandez.
Is this something we can discuss in the executive session? I feel like there's, there's more information that I'd like to have here now.
So, why don't we, why don't we hold it?
Why don't we hold it?
Hold it to another time?
Yeah.
Be great.
Okay, we'll hold it and, and have a discussion in the executive session.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to our calendar. Personnel Recreation Department. Question of approving the recommendation of the town of this, I'm sorry.
I think we skipped five N's. Yeah, there's an extra, I don't know if you have the newest version here, but, uh...
Oh, okay. Can I have it?
The latest, uh...
Okay, sorry. Uh, I was looking at the wrong agenda. Apologize to our vast audience here. Question of accepting a rebate check. I don't know why I would miss that. Uh, in the amount of four thousand dollars from National Grid for energy conservation measures.
Yes, Charles Inspector Building is a sport that was done, uh, a project we had done recently, and, uh, the gas company is giving us money for more of this.
Any questions, comments, other than we always check, uh, have a rebate check?
Thank you, Mr. Simmons, for your diligence and getting these reductions.
Okay, um, all in favor, um, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, sorry for that. Uh, going on to the calendar. Question of approving the recommendation of the town administrator to appoint Lee Jackson as Director of Recreation.
Yeah.
Oh, no, this is yours.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, actually, it was my expectation that Ms. Jackson and members of the Park and Recreation were gonna be in attendance, they're meeting this evening, so, um, would you mind just deferring it for, and come back to it?
Sure.
I'll, and I'll find out what their, their plans are. Thank you.
Okay. Question of approving the filing of the following vacancies in the Building Department, Senior Custodian and Operations Manager. Simmons again.
With permission to hire two gentlemen, retired, twenty years, my Operations Manager, Leo Zuppi, and Phil Murphy, who's a custodian for the...
Okay, any questions? As you know, you, we always expect you to make sarcastic wide net, make sure that the applicant pool is as diverse as possible, to get, uh, type of quality, um, opportunities to bring new people in that we need to do in this town. Um, any questions, comments? Okay. More approval of the, uh, filling of, of the vacancies for Senior Custodial and Operations Manager? Uh, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Papasturian? Proclamation National Public Works Week. Question of adopting a proclamation proclaiming the week of May nineteen to twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen, as national...
The week also seeks to enhance the prestige of the often unsung heroes of our society, those professionals who serve the public good every day with quiet dedication, and who oftentimes are available as first responders in any type of emergency. We therefore believe that is important for our community to honor those who devote their lives to its service. The DPW will celebrate the week with our annual open house on Tuesday, May twenty-first, at the Municipal Service Center, uh, and that's rain or shine. The Brookline third graders will join us in the morning, uh, and have a good time blowing all the air horns and waking the neighbors up. Uh, and the facility will be open to the public from noon to six PM, and I urge all of you to, uh, please come and join us, uh, and tour our facility. Additionally, this year, the DPW will be joining a multi-community effort for a fill of public works truck. Those are the flyers that I've passed around, uh, with non-perishable food items that will be collected for the Brookline Food Pantry. The truck will be available at the Stop &amp; Shop on Harvard Street on Sunday from ten in the morning till two in the afternoon, and at the Municipal Service Center on Tuesday during the open house. In addition, a collection box will also be available at the DPW main office here in Town Hall. So, thank you for your, uh, in advance for approving of the proclamation I have included in your bag for your signature.
Any questions, comments?
I just wanna echo Mr. Papasturian's comments about, um, some of the unsung heroes in town, in the DPW department and elsewhere. I think we've got very hard-working, uh, town employees, and I especially are thankful for them, uh, every day, particularly in the winter when my streets are plowed and trash is collected, and, uh, when I visit parks, and, um, they're so well-careful and, um, ready to serve us. So, thank you to you, and thank you to your entire staff for the hard work.
Um, I echo, uh, Mr. Franco's sentiments, and, um, I'm thrilled to see that you are, um, working on, uh, to end hunger by collecting, uh, items for, um, the Brookline Food Pantry. I have a question. Um, the truck will be located at, on Sunday, May nineteenth, at Stop &amp; Shop. What are the hours of that?
From ten AM to two PM.
Okay, ten AM to two PM, and how about at Town Hall, it'll be just the hours?
All week long, it'll be...
Just, just the time the Town Hall is open?
Yeah, all week long, and then also with the Municipal Service Center on Tuesday during our open house.
Okay, from twelve to six?
No, it'll be there all day long if you can't come by.
Okay, okay, great. I think it's important for the public to know, because that is one avenue that people can take to donate to the pantry, um, and it's frequently not, you know, not, uh, something people can do during the Tuesdays and Thursdays that the pantry collects. So, this is terrific. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to applaud you for not only collecting food for the food pantry, but focusing on whole grains and other health, healthy types of foods. Too often, people will, you know, give, uh, food that's sort of marginally nutritious, without appreciating the fact that the people who receive this food really need the nutritional benefits of whole grains and, and, um, and other healthy, uh, foods. So, I applaud you for that.
Come help us fill the truck, and if we can fill one truck, maybe we can fill two.
That would be great.
All right. Will do. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Um, let's see. More approval? Uh, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, uh, back to Personnel, uh, approval in our Recreation Department. Uh, Mr. Fleckner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna move to the podium for this momentous, uh, recommendation and vote. It's, uh, my pleasure this evening to recommend the board's approval, the appointment of Lee Jackson as the Town Recreation Director. Lee has, uh, served in the town, um, as the Assistant Recreation Director, but also in the acting capacity over the last year, and, uh, I'll talk about that in just a moment. Um, the interesting thing about this position, uh, in relation to other department head positions, is this is the only department head position that requires the approval of another board, other than the board, uh, the Select Board, and that's the Park and Recreation Commission. Specifically, uh, identified in the Town Administrator Act that the, any recommendation that I make to you, uh, for this particular position, has the approval of the Park and Recreation Commission. So, this is a little different... So, this is a little different. The Park and Recreation Commission did, as is in your packet, make a recommendation that I consider Ms. Jackson exclusively for this position, which I was not opposed to doing, but I did require that a process evolved and that the incumbent be provided a rigorous opportunity to, for us to evaluate their credentials and their suitability for this position. And so, I did. Select Board Member Heller served on that panel. I thank her for her leadership in that area. Two members of our commission, of the Park and Recreation Commission, served. Nancy O'Connor, who's, I think, hanging out at Fenway tonight, and also Jim Carroll were on that, and also Amy Hummel was on our panel from the Advisory Committee. And I would say that we went through a pretty rigorous review, not only meeting, talked about issues that are going on in the Recreation Department and what qualities are important for a Recreation Director, but then a very extensive interview with Ms. Jackson to make sure that that followed up. I think, as I mentioned, she has been serving in the acting director role, and that comes with its blessings and curse. Anytime you're in the role, you get credit for all good things and maybe not so great credit for other things. And there was issues that we wanted to make sure that we really fully understood. One in particular was, I won't say controversy necessarily, but an issue going on that some of the folks in the senior community felt that perhaps the Recreation Department was acting away or somehow changing the programmatic aspects to their department, to their group. And we talked about that. I personally went and talked to the Constellation Director and asked Lee Jackson to handle Recreation Commission to explain that, and we went through it pretty carefully. And I thought it was a really good process to use this process to try to not only understand it, but try to deal with it and improve it. And I think we did, I think teed that up very well, and frankly, Lee really made an effort, a strong effort, to address that issue. And I think we're even further along than we were before as a result of that. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, these issues come up with an incumbent, with a person in acting, and we dealt with it, and I think we dealt with it head-on, and I was proud of it. And I think frankly, it was one of the reasons why we thought Lee was acceptable for this, not only acceptable, but suitable for this position, and because of how she addressed this after the controversy arose. And so, I just wanted to mention that because that's been bubbling out a little bit in the public. So, in any event, I just want to say that Lee Jackson, who has been here for over two years now, has a master's degree in the Recreation area. I find that her area of expertise is sort of in the marketing and budgeting area, which she recently worked in REI, at REI, before coming here, which provided, I think, good sort of private sector type of focus on an industry, municipal recreation, that is heading almost like a competitive private sector. It is an enterprise. In fact, we run our headquarters as an enterprise, and we have a recreation revolving fund that's self-supporting, you know, primarily self-supporting for services. So, for a lot of reasons, you know, I'm very pleased to recommend Lee Jackson for your consideration this evening. Let me ask if I could just bring Lee up and if you wanted to say anything about the process.
Thank you, Mel. So, Lee Jackson, it's real pleasure and an honor to be here with you tonight. I am so excited, I can barely contain myself, but I am trying. I'm just real proud to be here. It has been, as Mel said, a learning, there's been a learning curve for me here, but I'm still excited, still as dedicated to this community, and I will continue to work my hardest and be true and be fair and be open and flexible as problems do arise. I am proud to have this very strong Parks and Recreation Commission here to support me as I move through time, and again, it's just an honor and would be a pleasure to serve this incredible department in the town of Brookline. So, thank you.
So, I'd like to just mention that I actually discussed the issue of senior programming with Ms. Jackson, and I found her to be very open and very willing to, you know, discuss, you know, issues and come up with ideas that would address the needs of seniors, which is a very important part of our community, and many of us are in that group and would have an interest in, you know, very, really robust senior programming in the Recreation Department as well as the other services we provide to seniors here in Brookline. So, I give her a checkmark for that willingness to listen and act on ideas that come before her. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just, I'll just comment, since I was a part of the process, that I thought that we did do a pretty thorough review of Lee's credentials, and we put her in the hot seat, and she held herself out very well with poise, grace, and information, and showing her dedication, I think, to Brookline and to this position, and her willingness to work with the community at various different levels to make good recreation programming happen. So, I think I'm fully supportive of this move.
I'd also like to add, in respect of marketing, be careful about marketing. Marketing goes over many people's heads. Sometimes you have to sort of focus on what it is that you individuals are getting out of the program, not, you know, the marketing, you know, too broad or layers of the conversation. Not a criticism, I'm just saying, you know. Any rate, any other questions?
We'll just add that I do remember your budget presentation, and they all tend to blur together, but your excitement made it memorable.
Yeah, I just want to add, just to just keep in mind, as you're doing the job and look forward to having you as now our full-time Director, or permanent Director as it were, is to remember, you know, that this place thrives on public input, and sometimes it feels like maybe a lot is coming your way. I'm already getting that sense, my little time here. But just remember that as important it is to communicate with the folks on your staff, it's equally more important to communicate with the folks in the town who are, you know, who have concerns about space and usage and things like that. And so, just continue to keep that in mind even as things get really tough and busy. But look forward to voting aye on this.
I'd actually like to add, and throw to remind me, also remember that we're a very diverse town. Seniors are a very important part. There are other parts of the community that make sure are not left out of programming. You know, a lot of issues come, I remember one issue came up before your time, the basketball courts. That's the type of issue that sometimes is overlooked and, you know, addresses the needs of a particular part of the community that we can't overlook. But, you know, there are other areas where, you know, we really need to be forward-thinking and innovative. I'm sure you will, if you definitely have the ability to do that, so. For our vote, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You now have two great credits.
I second that sentiment. Okay, next on the agenda, proclamation, JFK National Historic Site 50th Anniversary. Question of approving a proclamation acknowledging the JFK National Historic Site's 50th Anniversary.
Yeah, I thought that the National Park Service would be here tonight, but they're not, so I'll do it. I am the Board's representative to the event that's happening on May 29th, which I announced earlier. It's a two-part event. The first part is the essay contest. Third graders from the Coolidge Corner School talk about, there's a contest, and each class has an awardee with a runner-up, and it's about, the essay's about what JFK means to me, and I've attended this event on more than one occasion. It's very moving. It's something that brings smiles, but also for those of us who lived during the time of JFK, it causes a lot, a lot of reflection and contemplation about what he meant to us. This year, because the site itself was open to the public on May 29th, 1969, I'd like to say I wasn't born then, but that wouldn't be the truth. The, this is the 50th anniversary, so that's why actually the event, the Coolidge Corner Event, school event usually takes place on a Friday, but because of this particular year and this particular date, it's been moved to Wednesday. There's going to be a tent and music and speeches and proclamations. So, here is the town's proclamation. Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. Whereas Select Board of Brookline wishes to honor John Fitzgerald Kennedy National Historic Site, a unit of the National Park Service, on the 50th anniversary of its opening day. And you will recall that it was purchased for the National Park Service by Rose Fitzgerald Kennedy, and she was the one who was really behind all this. Whereas the Select Board of Brookline recognizes this place as one that was positively impacted and contributed to the greater good of the town of Brookline and local community, and whereas for 50 years, John Fitzgerald Kennedy National Historic Site has preserved the birthplace of John F. Kennedy and interpreted the formative years of his life and his enduring legacy along with his family's 13 years as Brookline residents. Whereas we recognize John F. Kennedy as the town of Brookline's most eminent son and a product of its schools, churches, and community. And whereas John Fitzgerald Kennedy National Historic Site maximizes opportunities to share its mission, bridges understanding across the generation of divide, offering programs both on and off-site to local school and senior groups, and whereas John Fitzgerald Kennedy National Historic Site and Frederick Law Olmsted National Historic Site, both in the town of Brookline, are two of the only 419 units within the National Parks System. Whereas the John Fitzgerald Kennedy National Historic Site preserves the historic and cultural resources, it keeps alive our national understanding and identity. And whereas John Fitzgerald Kennedy National Historic Site attracts over 25,000 visitors annually from the nation and around the world, this visitation positively impacts our local economy and enriches the social fabric of our community. Be it therefore resolved that we, the undersigned members of the Select Board of Brookline, on behalf of the citizens of the town of Brookline, recognize the 50th anniversary of John Fitzgerald Kennedy National Historic Site's public opening on May 29th, 1969, and signed as of May 29th, 1919, which is the date of the 2019, did I say 19? I'm sorry, 2019. And that's the proclamation that we will be voting on. Let me say just one other word before we take the vote, and that is that for those of you who have not toured the site, it's really very interesting and gives you a very clear idea of how the Kennedys lived when JFK was born. The house on Beale Street is a modest house. It's on a very lovely street, also modest homes, some of them are two-family, and they have a very interesting gift shop with many books, et cetera, celebrating John Kennedy and also other members of the Kennedy family. So, it's definitely worth a trip. I would advise you all to go.
Any other comments before I make my comment? I second Ms. Heller's comment. You know, Brookline is very, very lucky and should be very, very proud to be the hometown of a President of the United States of such stature as John Kennedy. With all his faults, he is one of the great Presidents in many ways, with all his faults, and we should be proud of that, and we should, you know, use the fact of his coming from Brookline as an opportunity to learn about not only his times, but also our own times and what his legacy means to us currently. I just urge people to take advantage of this great opportunity that few towns and cities in the country have. It's also the home of Robert Kennedy and Miss Rosemary Kennedy. I don't believe that Robert or John attended Brookline School, but Rosemary did.
No, no, John did, yes.
Well, I want to focus on Rosemary. Rosemary Kennedy did, and, you know, in our community, we really appreciate and work to support people with disabilities such as Rosemary Kennedy, and the fact that she attended what was then the Devotion School, and I think benefited from that experience despite later problems. It's something that we, you know, can be proud of and we should really learn about. So, it's another reason why, you know, this is such an honor to be the hometown of the Kennedy family. Any others?
I will just say that the town has thanked Mr. Fleckner for working with representatives from the National Park Service and bringing together departments of the town to work with them on this event, because there will be tents and there will be street closures and there will be music and there will be chairs and there will be discussions about parking, et cetera. So, the town has been very cooperative in the various departments, and I want to thank them for that.
So, on the question of approving the proclamation read by Ms. Heller acknowledging the JFK National Historic Site's 50th Anniversary, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, Boards and Commissions Interviews. Following candidates for appointment, reappointments, the Boards and Commissions will appear for interview. I see Mr. Honi in the audience. I don't see Mr. Conquest. Like step forward. And, um... And you are interviewing for the Indigenous People's Celebration Committee. I forgot to mention that.
Correct.
So, tell me a little bit about yourself, and I guess my question is, what are your ideas for this committee?
I've attended the last two or three meetings of the Indigenous Days Celebration Group, and my, well, the other thing that's important, in fact, is June 2nd, some of our collection of this Wabanaki art will be on exhibit at the library in the last case, and we really encourage people to look at that. So, my hope is that there can be some continuous education and learning about the New England tribes. And my wife and I, who have been active with some of these tribes, the interesting thing is that this was probably the only positive cross-cultural transaction between Native and non-Native people when they were creating this Wabanaki art, this fancy basket, and they collect, they started doing it from the 1850s, and it's still going on. So, my hope is that we have an opportunity for people to learn more about these New England tribes and this, and their culture. Many of us believe that if you understand the culture and respect it, that is very good.
When will the exhibit at the library?
June 2nd.
And it's mainly the basket evening?
Yes.
Which is a sort of very common cultural activity of various people. I remember something talking about in the Sea Islands, it was similar. I remember something talking about in the Sea Islands, because we're similar, like we think, there's a lot about the culture. Any other questions?
No, I just like to comment that these are fascinating. I happen to love baskets as well, but I've never seen some as beautiful as these. The cradle, this, I don't even know what you call it. Well, the fan, certainly, that your wife is holding, but also this one with the elaborate handles. What do you call that?
Used to call it fancy basket. What they did was actually a Victorian forms that they made. Then they, they used ash and sweetgrass to make this, this art. Frankly, they are the original main artists. And the other thing that's kind of interesting is it's over the years, very beginning. They were very entrepreneur, mostly women, and they were selling this artwork in Boston, Philadelphia, various resorts in New Hampshire, Mon, Maine.
They're beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll be voting on the appointments later on tonight. Any other question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if, if you're familiar with sort of land recognition, sort of ceremonies and events, if that's something you're familiar with. Certainly after town meeting passed, the change from Columbus State Indigenous Peoples' Day, really very much looking forward to this year having an event that would recognize that and, and having land recognition be a part of that. Is that something that you're familiar with?
Absolutely ready. Obviously, land is a very sensitive issue for Native Americans. And, no, that would, that would, that would...
Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, we'll be voting later on on appointments to the committee. If you want to hang around, you don't have to. Okay, we're not that far behind schedule, and we have a hearing scheduled for approximately 7:30. Public hearing on the petition of Crown Castle N G East LLC for permission to construct any location for, especially behind a conduit, a manhole, necessary cables therein, under the following public ways. Longwood Avenue and Harvard Street. Is anyone representing Crown Castle? If you step to my side. So explain to us what you plan to do and what the disruption of neighborhood will be, if any.
We're looking to install telecommunication from existing network. And start manhole system to the utility pool on Longwood Ave. Let us link us to our end destination at 1319 Beacon Street.
So you're digging into the ground to lay the conduit?
Correct.
And what type of construction activity is that going to entail?
Not just excavation. It'd be about a one-foot wide trench, two feet deep, and then the total distance of almost 200 feet.
But in the street?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll be along the curve, so try not to get in back of the trap.
How long would this, this part of the project take?
Should, as long as weather is bud-raw and you don't have any surprises under the roadway, should be estimated about a week. Parking restrictions? We will work with the traffic department. I submitted an interview with Engineering Department last week. Whatever the town requires, we will follow those rules as well as...
This may involve a comment by Mr. Ditto. Pairing up the street here, and we're always concerned about what's under our street in terms of the gas pipes and the leaks, and if there are any, we want them fixed while the street is open. We don't want to have the company come back and have to go through another disruptive process. So, Mr. Ditto, could you report to us about coordination with the gas company on this project?
If there are any applications needed, if I back it off the National Grid, please put us in a limited stadium of the status of if there are any gas leaks in the vicinity of this construction. And it's a standard form that we've been using now for the last couple of months. And we will not process the application until we get an answer from National Grid and public records. Fortunately, in both cases, no gas was found on Washington Street. And another one that I need is Longwood Ave. Hope those sites come up negative or...
Did they come up negative because National Grid was relying on its survey that could be several years old? Or had they done an up-to-date analysis of whether or not there was gas leaks in the street?
Yeah, I don't know what they used for based on, otherwise it's not exactly about...
I'm concerned about that because, you know, those pipes are really old and they do spring leaks. So, you know, I would appreciate knowing when they determined that there was no leak. They say there's none, but that might have been if they determined it 10 years ago. I just don't know.
There should be a date on that. To determine if...
Say April 29 of 19. So that, does that mean that they actually went out and, and looked at the site and determined that there was no leak there?
Yeah, it's either that or when they put that in the form of...
Yeah, well, that's my concern. So...
The date of signing is...
So maybe now that you're at the microphone, Mr. Ditto, this appears to be a particularly busy intersection in town at Longwood and Harvard Street. Can you just give us a sense of what the traffic management plan is going to be and any parking restrictions or hours of work that may be, maybe approved of it?
Yeah, this is part of the most busiest intersection in the town. That being said, fortunes are that it's aligned to the state. We, in situations like this, we delay the construction start till at least 9 o'clock. And we play it by ear from there. And usually we can get it to late as 4 o'clock, but outside of those, there's more traffic and... So that was explained to folks with Crown Castle last week, and maybe we could avoid construction start in the early 10 minutes.
I'll have another question. So was, where was, where were notices sent and whom were they sent to in terms of residents who would be impacted at 9 o'clock? This is 9 o'clock at night, correct?
9 o'clock in the morning.
9 o'clock in the morning, okay. So there's no night work involved? No night work involved? Okay. And so who would the notices sent to? Businesses, residents?
Yeah. You can, um, in the package, there's already the, uh, lots of it in that... That's, you're headed to the shaded area. There's a list of them. And they're listed, you have to add one.
I did not get that.
What is it? One of the heavier ones, and the other is a lighter one. And the lighter one is here, we showed what you got. And that was not part of my...
Thank you.
You don't have a number problem?
Well, this looks like the one on Washington. Where's the one in Harvard and Longwood? I see. Yeah. Well, even or not, there are people who live there, who live there. So we've recently gone through an incident where we approved work at night, no residents were here, we reported residents to give a notice, they say they weren't. So, you know, we're now facing that kind of a problem. So I want to make sure that we did, in fact, give people notice and that they understand what's going, what's going to happen. Will this be noisy work? Will it be backup trucks backing up with deep peeping lights and jackhammers?
There'll be an excavator, there may be some, some jackhammers, but there will be trucks backing up.
So traffic will be slowed to one lane?
We have a traffic control that I can leave a few alone. We follow the state guidelines and any specific guidelines that the town specifically has. For the most part, you know, we won't rotate, we won't just close the whole street. We'll do a certain section at a time to lock out the point of, uh, make as long as possible to make it, uh, best we can. We can work on weekends if that's an opportunity, an option. Whatever, whatever you require.
I think we require you work with Mr. Ditto in trying to identify the best times and methods for... That's a big difference, actually, sometimes with age, but, you know, other times, right? Probably get away with minimal traffic disruption.
And although it is one of the busiest intersections, I live on Longwood, so I frequently am in transit through that intersection, there's usually a police officer who works at the front foot at half-clock, and then there's a detail officer who goes to charge the car. So another detail or two activated in my opinion.
So this, I'm sorry, Ms. Fernandez? So this is a public hearing. If anyone from the public has anything to say, like statements, please rise and stand up. Any other questions or comments? This is just the first of three of these, so... Okay, move approval of the petition of Crown Castle N G East LLC for permission to construct any location for each line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public ways. Longwood Avenue, conduit southeasterly from Harvard Street, a distance of about 114 feet to a new manhole, thence turning and running northeasterly, a distance of about 38 feet to hole 132 slash 2 dash 3. And Harvard Street, conduit easterly from Longwood Avenue, a distance of about 50 feet to existing manhole 3600. Um, westerly, did I say easterly? I apologize. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. Next, don't leave. Public hearing on the petition of Crown Castle N G East LLC for permission to construct any location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Washington Street, conduit northeasterly and northerly from a, from existing manhole 14892, approximately 35 feet west of Walnut Street, a distance of about 55 feet to a new manhole, and conduit easterly and northerly from the new manhole, a distance of about 87 feet to ten Brookline plates. Any questions?
Well, it's again, it's a, it's a very, it's a pretty heavily trafficked area. We want to make sure that we're going to be doing the work during the day.
Our, our plan is to start on Thursday of this week, work Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then into next week. We did revise after meeting with Engineering Institute. We did revise the plan a little bit. We'll be, we will not be installing a manhole, and the total distance will drop down to 117 feet.
So I guess we're voting as amended.
Yes, and I have revised water for the black barn that I considered as well that was submitted to...
But the plan is still to have this cross the width of Route 9 from, from the Walnut Street side to the Brookline Village side.
Correct.
I believe that Route 9 is a state road. Is that incorrect?
Yeah, it starts in the bank, bank path.
So that piece that runs into Harvard Street is ours. I see.
Also, we did the...
Yeah, and the additional complication here, and I'm absolutely sure that Mr. Ditto has thought of this, is it's a major corridor into the longer medical area for ambulances and public safety personnel in the western suburbs. So we should just, to the extent necessary, make sure everybody's aware that this work is taking place and that they've got a fast and safe route down Route 9 to the longer medical area.
So the construction work that you're performing is not going to stop traffic. It's just going to continue moving through the intersection.
Correct. It will just be a separate...
So make sure that you address, Mr. Franco, concerns that people, that proper people be notified and that, you know, whatever is needed to be done to ensure that there's quick passage through that bottleneck is done. And Mr. Ditto, I'm sure will help you out there. Okay, any other questions? Again, a public hearing. Any one in the audience wish to speak on this matter? None? On the question of approving of the petition of Crown Castle N G East LLC for permission to construct a location for conduits and manholes in the area previously mentioned, all in favor, say aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye. Okay, and finally, public hearing upon the petition of Verizon. So a new, new group.
New victim.
New victim, right. Thank you. Okay, public hearing upon the petition of Verizon New England Inc. for permission to construct in a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein... and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Gen S Road, conduit northeasterly from existing pole three seven eight slash two, on the easterly side, approximately two hundred feet from Summit Avenue, a distance of about ten feet to an existing manhole. Is that the right word?
Yes, yep.
So, please explain with your planning.
First, my name, I'm Richard Foreman. I'm representing Verizon New England. This is just a small ten-foot section of two-inch conduit that will be located in the grassy shoulder at the end of Gen S Road. Yes, it's off of pole two. That's the last pole on the street. Like you said, it's an existing manhole, which is a small platform. This is going to connect for new service.
And what type of digging is involved?
Very minimal. This particular location, it's a cul-de-sac, so I would think that if a small excavator is involved, it would be off to the side, construction crew, laggards, if that at all. It may even just be hand digging. Won't impact traffic that much, if at all. Like I said, I checked out the location of the cul-de-sac. The pole happens to be just at the beginning of the cul-de-sac and the conduit is going to extend like to the right of the cul-de-sac, so it should be out of the way of traffic.
And you've notified all of the residents immediately impacted by this?
Yes, all of the residents. A butter should have been notified.
Any questions from the board?
How long is this work going to go? Seems like a relatively.
A day, yeah. But not long at all. Very small piece.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Any comments, questions from the audience? No? Hearing none. I move approval of the petition of Verizon New England for permission to construct and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the Gen S Road area, as previously described. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, liquor license, all kinds common victor. Public hearing on approving the application for Victorios Grill and Kitchen, doing business at Victorios Grill and Kitchen. Mr. Bisham Bop, manager, has applied for an alcohol beverages license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises at thirteen ninety-eight Deacon Street with a seating capacity of sixteen seats. Proposed operating hours for sales of alcoholic beverages are Sunday through Thursday, twelve P M. to nine P M.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Adam Barnowski. I'm a law firm over at Israel Weiner, two fifty-five State Street, Boston. With me is Niso Ben Shabat. He's the owner and of the LLC, the proposed manager of record. We are here seeking a new all kinds alcoholic beverage license at thirteen ninety-eight Deacon Street. For those unfamiliar with the property, it's located just west of Coolidge Corner, on the block between Winchester and Summit Avenue. It's located in the first floor retail space in the multi-unit mixed-use building. The business has been operating as a common vittler for about a year and a half at the property. We're just seeking now to add beer, wine, cocktail service to their existing restaurant. This is one of only a few remaining kosher restaurants in Brookline. Its hours of operation, its general operation won't be in exactly the same way as it is now. It's open from Sunday through Thursday, twelve noon until nine P M., closed through Sabbath on Friday and Saturday. The owner and proposed manager of record, Niso Ben Shabat, he's born and raised in Brookline. He's a graduate of Brookline High. He's tip trained, crowd manager certified. He's familiar with the rules and regulations of this board and the A B C C. He will be on site at all times. You can see, it's kind of a narrow window for hours of operation, twelve to nine, five days a week. So, he will be there all the time. He will be the person who is in charge of alcohol beverage service at the restaurant. It's a fairly straightforward request of his board. Niso Ben Shabat did want to say a few things about his operation if the board had a view.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm just looking to create a living type of atmosphere for the kosher-keeping community. They really don't have anywhere to go to have a gourmet dish with an alcoholic beverage. I feel your help and I'll go achieve.
You've been the manager of record on the liquor license before?
No, I've not.
Why don't you talk a little bit about your conversation with the police department and sort of one of the, what are some of the special restrictions or things to be aware of about the service of alcohol here in Brookline?
Well, for one, the alcohol storage, that's very important. Beer must be kept in proper temperatures for wine, et cetera. We spoke about where we're going to put cabinet for storage of glasses and sort of gear for. Everything's got to be, we spoke about sanitation. I have a very good department. And also about the tip certification, how to serve, how to ID, very important stuff. We're not looking to do anything crazy. We're going to serve alcohol as a central.
Are you pointing out IDing everybody or?
So, have you been at the restaurant prior to, I mean, have you always been with the restaurant?
Most of the time, yes. It was owned by my cousin before that, about a year and a half ago, and I had worked for him for a period of time.
You're not new to this restaurant?
No. Actually, I worked there while I was in high school years ago, a pizza place. I'm very familiar with the premises. It's owned by my uncle, so I want to keep it alive.
I was going to say that I live right around the corner and I have seen, maybe since he took over as manager, an uptick in the amount of people there. And, you know, I walk by and I see a really good crowd and I need to do better about stopping by myself to grab something.
Not anytime.
All right.
I'll personally make it there.
Oh, thanks.
I think I remember when you came before us not that long ago to update the menu.
Yes.
So, Victorios has been there for a very long time, so I'm pleased to see investment in a long-serving establishment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I just mention, this is a unique situation where this is the first restaurant that is the recipient of one of our new licenses that we were able to secure from the legislature last year. We had essentially run out of licenses on our quota and petitioned legislature for a whole new series of licenses, and this is the first one that I recall is the recipient of one of these licenses, so it's great.
Thank you, Mr. Franco.
And I also want to mention that you're, I think, the only kosher restaurant that serves alcohol. There is a kosher block up on Harley Street that has a liquor license. That's not urging people to go out and drink, but that is an important thing for the community that their kosher rules.
Yeah.
There is one issue that is kind of bubbling around the town, and that has to do with composting. And the schools are, Lincoln School in particular, has been engaged in it for some time, and it is a private company, which if you contact with them.
We do compost.
You do?
Yeah. Actually, my head kosher supervisor, during this.
Right. So, you do.
We have the bucket station.
So, which company are you using?
I'm not sure. I need to ask him.
Because one of the companies, if you mention our school, so make a donation to the school, which would very help us. The company will make the donation.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
I do want to add one thing, and I'm sure the police department talked to you about it, that we do things, we send in an underage individual that looks like they're over the age of twenty-one, with the goal of trying to purchase a drink. So, consider yourself one. I hope we don't see you back here. But now we're all on the same page.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Any comments on the public? None. I move that we approve this application. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Common victor license and entertainment. Question of approving the application of Takeria Albario LLC, doing business at Takeria Albario, ten twenty-two Commonwealth Avenue, with a seating capacity of twenty-four seats. Hours of operation will be Sunday through Saturday, nine A M. to one A M. This location was previously occupied by U Burger Restaurants.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Servio Garcia. Alex Sines, which is my business partner in this venture. We're here to, we're applying for the licenses to open Takeria Albario, ten twenty-two Commonwealth
Anything we need to know about?
Sure. We're more than happy to answer any question you might have. Very much our concept is it's going to be a Mexican takeria. Our focus will be on Midwest, no, sorry, Northwest style food in Mexico, which is a totally different thing that so far is not existing in Boston. We'll be offering different options for our guests. It will be tacos, with plates, quesadillas, and tortas. So, tortas is pretty much a sandwich. We'll be using as much as possible local ingredients. It will be authentic food, Mexican food, that's pretty much our goal. We're making some of the tortillas in-house. As well, we're doing things like you asked, for example, we'll be recycling, composting. We have systems in place that will help us to do that. Our intent, hours of operation will be from probably nine in the morning at some point that you will start with. We'll start from eleven A M. and probably eleven to eleven. And as we get our food on the ground, we'll start, our standard hours of operation, start serving some sort of breakfast, as well some specials, and try to close a little later if the business obviously required or is a need for it. Our goal pretty much is just to cater to the community, especially the Boston University students. Our price point, if you have a copy of the menu, is pretty much really accessible. It's two seventy-five a taco, five dollars, quesadilla, eight dollars a torta, pretty much you have a torta. It would be also for lunch. Plates, nine to ten dollars, eleven dollars, twelve dollars, the more expensive one. We will be offering house-made, I was frescas, which is fresh waters, made with fresh ingredients, and it will be seasonal as well. So, we try to do as much as possible in-house. Everything will be made in-house rather than just buy it already pre-made inside to the people. What else I can tell you? Eventually, well, we will see, you'll see us back sometime soon. We intend to apply for a legal license and offer also some legal license, but so right now, our priority is to pretty much open, get out and run and open, and then start paying our bill, start paying out, as you probably know, the restaurants. And that's pretty much our intent. A little bit of background, we've been in the industry, myself, for over twenty years. Chef Alex, which is my business partner, has been here, has been doing something similar for close to twenty years, I believe. Currently, I have, or we have, a couple restaurants. One is in Somerville. It's Bergamo Restaurant, been open for nine years. This restaurant is in Cambridge and has been open, it's going to be a four years actually in a couple of weeks. We've been there for several number of years, which is not easy in the restaurant industry. We have won several accolades, which is our approach, a commitment to hospitality, as well to being able to keep the standards in consistent of the system. And that's something that we want to bring to the town of Brookline. We're looking forward to working with the community. We're looking forward to be part of this community, and we're looking forward to be here for a long, long run.
So, I've got two sort of clarifying questions.
Yes.
It looks like you initially applied for forty-three seats, but according to the building department, you're only allowed a maximum of twenty-four. I just want to make sure. We're on the same page about that.
That was a mission extended with the building department. Initially, we went and applied for that number of seating. We have the space. We have, everything is, it allows to go up to fifty seats. But while doing all the process and we actually applied for it, and the last minute after you apply, we paid for the fees, came in to check if everything was in order, and that when he told me, oh, yeah, we'll see you in six months. I said, what do you mean, six months? So, it takes six months. So, I cannot be open for not six months. So, he highly recommended you open with twenty-four seats, and after we open, we will apply again for the increase in capacity, which requires a certain type of permit. So, if we will have to wait for, have the capacity of twenty-six people, we will be able to be in business. So, we cannot wait for six more months. That's pretty much why, that was the change of the numbers of seating capacity.
And then I want to dig in a little bit on the hours of operation. I noticed that the application hours don't match with the cover sheet, so can you just, I know you went over this earlier, can you just?
Sure. Our goal will be, ultimate goal will be open from nine A M. in the morning to one A M. in the morning. And once again, we're here to be part of the community, and our clientele or guests will be taking what their needs for that particular area. So, we are willing and more than happy to adapt to the needs of our guests and the clientele of the community. So, to start with, obviously, there's a new venture, even though we have years of experience, it's not always easy to open a new restaurant. So, in order to not kill our employees, not kill ourselves, we want to start open at eleven A M. and close eleven P M. So, there are twelve hours of operation that we're allowed. We have three shifts, right, and four or five shifts to begin with, but eventually, we would love to have the ability to open from nine in the morning and close at one A M. in the morning. That might be a little of the confusion as well.
And?
And that was changed also in recommendation from.
And that's eleven to eleven, you're proposing that seven days a week?
Yes, we will be open seven days a week.
Any other questions?
Now, Mr. Franco, it says Sunday, ten to eleven, and Monday to Saturday, eight to eleven.
So, I think that's fine on what's on the cover sheet, but if you look on page three twenty-two, the proposed hours there are Sunday.
They're different.
And I just wanted to get some clarity with that.
There were, I'm sorry to interrupt, there were a couple of amendments to that, and I don't know, the old amendments will make it to your package. And that was pretty much, we've been working on this for four, five months, six months now. So, there've been different amendments, so I don't know exactly what you have from you, but that's pretty much what we love to do. At the end of the day, we'll be open at nine in the morning to serve, to business, and close at one A M. in the morning. If, once again, that is something that is going to be business to it and going to be, we'll be catering to the community.
And what was the, what were the hours of U Burger, did I understand?
To be honest with you, I'm not familiar with. I never had the pleasure to eat there or visit the place before all that particular petition. So, I won't be able to speak into it.
So, the hours of T. Anthony's, which is just two doors down, is up until one A M. every day of the week.
And that's also what's in base.
It's open at seven A M.
That's also one of the recommendations from one of the people on the city who say, you know, we should probably open until one because there is business, definitely it's people who's going to go over there. And we are, we're going to offer more options, but people, right, and just having pizza, it's going to be something else.
Okay. So, now I'm a little confused. What is it that we're voting on? The hours?
Will be, ultimately, will be from nine A M. to one A M. in the morning.
Well, okay, that's ultimately, but what's now?
I think we're going to vote. I think we're going to vote on what's on, in the agenda. So it's 10 to 11, Sunday, and then 8 to 11, Monday through Saturday. But not all of those hours, I think, are going to be utilized in the neutral.
Okay.
Does that make sense, though? I mean, if we don't have any objection, what did the notice say to the neighbors?
I think it was what you have in the, in the package.
Well, we have two things to say. We can do this, and if the neighbors are direct with that, I'd like to see what they want to say. Was anyone here?
Well, what's on the cover is the minimum hours, right? I mean, the more expanded hours are something that they are looking forward to in the future.
That's, that's my guess.
Yeah, so we're, we're.
But won't they have to come back to us?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
They're prepared, they're prepared to do that. Can they come back for a legal license anyway?
Unfortunately, you will see.
This is not a public hearing, but we offer the opportunity to anyone who would like to come up and make comments. Seeing none?
I just want to go in on one more, one more issue here. So this is a particularly busy street, which I think is probably a good thing for you, but I'm, I just want to dig in a little bit on deliveries, when you're expecting to take delivery and what the entry point is going to be. Is there a rear alley or?
There's going to be in the back alley, yes. We have, with the lease, we have two parking spaces. So they're pretty much, one will try to keep it open all the time for delivery people to come in and pick it up. So once the food is prepared, we'll have especially pickup area on the back where they can go and pick it up.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. On the question of approving the application for Takeria Albario doing business as Takeria Albario, 1022 Commonwealth Avenue, with a seating capacity of 24 seats, and hours of operation of 10:00 a.m. on Sunday to 11:00 p.m., and Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and subject to approval by the fire department, which is still pending. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Chair of both sides.
You'll get it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay. Question, change of hours and alternate manager. Question of approving the application of change of hours for Magnus Beverage Corp. doing business as Brookline Wine and Spirits, 94 Washington Street, Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday to Saturday, 10:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Proposed hours of Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Monday to Saturday, oh, this, I don't understand this. Tell me what hours you're seeking.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, and I'm Mr. Mculte Miller, attorney for applicant. We're seeking approval for the change of hours of operation, 10 to 11 on Sundays, 8 to 11 Monday through Saturday. Your version was a little bit more courtier than mine. Then we are also seeking approval of an alternate manager, who is with me tonight, that is Endur Paul Singh. Also with me is Schinder Singh, who is the manager of record on the ADCC license, both are corporate officers and owners of the license. Brookline Wine and Spirits, right across the street, is a family-owned and operated retail package store. Since last year, and since we've opened, has been well-received in the neighborhood. We made improvements with the store to improve the quality of the location, improve it for the town and patrons, and now we're seeking to meet the public need despite standing hours of operation. Endur Paul has been with the company since we opened here in Brookline. He's available to be on the premises when Schinder is not. He completed his beverage alcohol training offered by the Massachusetts Retail Package Store Association course in May of last year. The certificate doesn't expire until 2021. And then long-term, he'll probably be replaced with someone who can share the hours a little bit better with Schinder, but until then, he's our guy. With that, with this question, the board may come.
Okay, so we're, we're voting on two things. It's not clear on the agenda. We're voting on the change of hours and the alternate, alternate manager. Okay, so let's, any questions? This is not a hearing, but if anyone has comments from the audience? Hearing none? So, two questions. First, question of approving the application of change of hours for Magnus Beverage Corp. doing business as Brookline Wine and Spirits. Two, proposed hours of Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. All in favor? That part of the question? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton? Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair of both sides. And then, second question of approv, of approving, ultimate, ah, excuse me, alternate, alternate manager, Endur Paul Singh. Any questions? All in favor? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton? Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair of both sides. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question of approving the application for Temptation Cafe Inc., doing business as Temptation Cafe, for outdoor seating at 1350 Beacon Street, consisting of four tables and eight chairs. Is there anyone representing Temptations? You need them to be here?
I would hold it, I think.
Okay.
I'd like to get a little bit of narrative detail about what's going on.
Okay, good. We'll hold that for a later meeting. So, next. Question of renewing a mobile food vendor license for Zack's Ice Cream Truck. Ahmed Al Khab Tabi, operator. Is Mr. Al Khab Tabi in the audience? Can you hold that? Next. Boston Housing Authority Building Permit Fees.
Brookline Housing Authority.
Okay. And we're a town, not a city, right?
Exactly right.
Mr. Del Bear?
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's good.
I wasn't even looking at you.
Reverse order here, so. I'm Roger Blood, you know, having advisory board, and we're here to, because he asked to recommend that, firstly, first, I'd like to begin by congratulating our new select board member, newest select board member. Thank you. Ms. Fernandez? Welcome. We look forward to working with you as well as members. We at the HAB would like to support, hopefully, your positive vote to approve the waiver of the entire building permit fee that was normally charged for the housing authorities proposed project in 61 Park Street. It's a 100 unit project, which involves the major renovations, which they'll hear more about in a moment, and the fee would be approximately $17,000. The, this, of course, is just another way the town can financially support the affordable housing contributions of the, of the housing authority, which are very significant to the town. You may remember, if you were here previously for Dummer Street, the town and the select board approved a waiver for that project on a, on a, on an individual basis. In this case, with the situation coming again, the housing advisory board actually took up the discussion of whether we should have a policy for fee waivers for the housing authority and also potentially other affordable housing developers. At this point, we haven't finished that discussion and adopted any formal position on that, but we've gotten far enough along that it's very clear that all the HAB members do support not just this waiver, but will be supporting similar waivers for this particular entity, the VHA, in the future. They really do have a unique position in relation to the town and in relation to affordable housing. First of all, they are the only ones that consistently provide low-income rental housing, which that's all they do. And they are a permanent partner for us. We look forward to working with them for a long time. And as a, as a public entity, they, they don't have, for example, the opportunity to do private fundraising, which some other developers of the housing might not be able to do. You may remember also, we've approved some revolving funding, or pre-development funding for a number of projects, including this one, that the housing authority is going to be doing major renovations on over the next few years. For, for this project in particular, the waiver of the building permit fee is the only financial assistance that the VHA is looking for. For the other projects, that, that may not be the case. So this is the first of a number of projects in the series of work that they're doing now, that they're even doing without. So, I'm not sure they're doing, I'm just representing it directly to the housing side.
I'm glad you're on the phone, Mr. Green, and I'd like to raise an addition to this group here. I appreciate the select board considering this being a waiver tonight. We're really very excited about breaking ground this summer, what it's doing in Park Street, Park Street, where Shay has, and the start of our preservation initiatives, hopefully, to accommodate approximately 500 units of our federal housing. Our property has been vastly underplanted for years, and this really through the Rental Systems Demonstration Program, a lead program, combinations of tactics and hard plans, and really one of the first steps in building a new management program. The scope of work, going to renovate, fully renovate interiors of these apartments, it's going to take care of heating and ventilation systems, residence, air conditioning, incredible improvement in their basic lives, it's been an accessibility, showers, really the physical needs of residents, community facilities, and this building has improved a vast improvement in the day-to-day lives, as I just spoke, as Roger mentioned. The town is a strong supporter, the VHA, the recent construction of Dummer Street. The building department, the understanding is already, with no objection to this, and we hope that you will follow through and prove this recommendation. Chairman Green, who recommended that Patrick say a few words about our property maintenance and security, and if I have to answer any questions, get off with your permit, if not, turn it over to Patrick.
It's actually not a question about the fees themselves, it's a question about the, what measures you're taking to make the building more environmentally friendly, if I can call it that, more contribute to the town's carbon emission reduction goal of 2050, with zero carbon emissions, so.
Yeah, sorry, since we are a low-budget organization, we're low-frills, and not to say sustaining environment isn't critical for any property, but, you know, we will contribute significantly to reduce the carbon footprint simply by having utilities, new utility systems, new heating, cooling, air circulation systems, more healthy indoor air for the first time since a property was built 50 years ago. So our, our consumption, water, energy, will go down considerably. We'll be putting in new measures for handling trash and recycling, which should improve our, our recycling compliance, which is always a challenge. So it's nothing fancy, but, you know, overall, it'll be a vast improvement in our consumption.
Are you considering measures like ground source pumps, air source pumps, in order to provide more efficient electrical energy as well as the grid becomes more renewable energy friendly, if I can say that?
Yeah. No, that's exactly right. Our, our heating and cooling system will be heat pumped, and latest technology available within our, within our budget, and to take advantage of the increasing ability to use clean energy.
Another question, has the Brookline Housing Authority considered, are you part of the town's community activation program, Brookline Green?
we could add to that and make it more effective, you know, the town's purchasing department, I know, has always been, I know, that we write departments, open to collaborating with everybody, so we'd be glad to see if there's.
My, my major concern is how much renewable energy you're purchasing as opposed to fossil fuels.
Right, yes.
Where you get it, you know, whether you're part of a consortium or part of our program, I'm not as concerned, although I probably should be. You know, I'm concerned with the, with our goal of zero carbon emissions.
Yeah, you know, it's, I would say it's, your point isn't, but it's a little tangential for the moment, but what we should achieve in this property is something better than break-even operations. You know, public housing as it operates right now, we're lucky if we can break even in any given year, and with this property where we'll be operating more efficiently, we generate a little bit of cash flow. You know, I think the priority of the commissioners would very likely be to make that choice to purchase a higher percentage, or hopefully 100% of the energy from renewable sources, and make that a policy goal. So, you know, it's, it's noted, and we'd love to be able to do that, frankly.
Have you also considered the installation of solar panels?
Yeah, we, we did look at that and didn't find the location and footprint of the building to be efficient, sensible economically to do that. But we know the economics of that, and the technologies are changing, so we wouldn't want to, you know, rule it out forever, and we'll certainly have an open mind. We get a lot of information actually from our energy purchasing cooperative power options as new technologies come along, so we definitely keep an open mind to it.
Any other questions? I move approval of the request of the Brookline Housing Authority to have the select board waive building fees for VHA's 61 Park Street Innovation Project. All in favor? Actually, Mr. Del Bear, you were going to talk about the maintenance issue.
Yeah, could we do that right now? Yeah. Very glad to do it, and appreciate the opportunity, and, by the way, congratulations. Look forward to working with Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Chairman Green, congratulations. We have great partnership, and as folks know who've joined the select board before, we love taking folks around, showing the properties to programs, we look forward to that. And, but, yeah, so just a few words, it's actually a good transition. One of the great, great welcome benefits of a totally rehabilitated property is that the maintenance and repair needs will go like that, and allow us to stretch our resources right away at the other properties further. But, you know, just a very brief summary for now, as, as Mr. Green suggested, we're glad to continue conversation in the future, but, you know, basically four components of how we approach maintenance and repair of our properties, which work together, and I think, as Mike may have mentioned, our properties to be think as Mike may have mentioned, our properties to be, to be clear about the situation, we have multimillion-dollar capital repair deficits, which make it quite a challenge, but our staff works incredibly hard to stay on top of things. And so four components. One is we, although we don't have the funding we need, we have an annual capital repair program, we do have some funds, and we have capital need studies, and we're always moving priority projects up and down, depending on what the safety needs are, the resident comfort and health needs are. So we have an annual capital repair program, and the town of Brookline supplements typically by about 20% the capital repair funds that we receive from HUD and from the state, and that's really helpful, goes a long way. You know, over the past 24 months, just real quick examples, projects we have either on the drawing board, or just completed, new playgrounds and landscaping at the Egmont Street Family Development, a new community room, and resident services offices at Custom Development. Right now, we're actually under construction, repairing, there's a long outside stairway at the High Street Veterans Property that comes up from High Street to the community room, long stairway, curating, we're replacing that right now. We just got a grant from the state for $100,000 to put in bathroom exhaust fan at Egmont Street, long overdue, funding hadn't been available, it'd be very nice to get that done, and so on. So just a flavor of some of the technical projects right now. So annual capital repairs. Secondly, and kind of the mainstay of it, is resident work orders. Our residents are routinely and strongly encouraged to report their maintenance needs, no requests too big or too small. We, every phone call turns into a work order, which is tracked through our software system and tells complete, and we circulate to our residents instructions on how to report their work orders, whether it's nine to five, or after hours, if it's an emergency or routine, and we provide information to our residents in Russian, English, Spanish, Mandarin, refrigerator magnets. As a matter of fact, just less than a year ago, we published a new set of translations, and so people are, you know, we rely on people to some extent. You have to tell us if something needs fixing inside your apartment, because we're not in there every day, but that's a big part of it. Thirdly, preventative maintenance. So our staff, we use a checklist approach to inspect the properties, make repairs where we see them with our own eyes. We contract with an outside inspections company that comes in every year or two years, and they go through all the apartments, all the components, and they give us a checklist. So that's sort of a, you know, very systemic proactive approach. And then on top of that, our regulators, the HCD at the state level, HUD, also inspect our properties, from multiple levels there. And then finally, where we come into some collaborations with the town, what I'll call special situations, you know, on occasion a household will have, what they call a housekeeping issue, a health code violation could arise, and we work in those situations really closely with the Health Department, our social workers at the Brookline Center, to support our residents to deal with things like boarding issues, you know, they come up with some regularity, block egresses, and to get our residents, you know, the help they need. Someone mentioned disabilities in Rosemary County a little while ago, but folks may not know, but we have the largest number of accessible units in town, and at last count, 38% of our households, successful, not just not, are households with one sort of disability or another. So a big piece of what we do, actually, are some of those special cases where we need to bring in some support to take care of issues in progress. So those four pieces work together, and that's a quick kind of snapshot of how we go about the work, and it's really, in a lot of ways, our fundamental work, and we will not claim that we're perfect, there are always things we're running around to try and jump on and take care of, but that's our perspective.
Any other questions? So I move approval of the request that the Select Board waive building permit fees for the VHA's 61 Park Street renovation project. All in favor, Mr. Frankel?
Hi.
Mr. Teller?
Hi.
Hi.
Fernandez?
Hi.
And Chairman Ossai? Thank you.
I will ask, if we were to do more of a policy collaboration where the VHA properties were exempt from this, who would move that forward? Would that be the Select Person's Office, or the VHS?
The HAB would vote the policy, and the Select Board reached, we agree here, and ask you to ratify it.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, warrant articles, go. Fun, fun, fun. And it's just 8:45, we got to, uh...
Look at the heads.
Earlier, yeah, wow, okay, I'm trying to be optimistic here.
I promise I will try and be concise. So the first article for the Board to consider is Article 9. You should have had a memo from me at your places, which essentially describes where we're at with Article 9. So when the Board originally voted Article 9, it was contemplated that we would have a successful override that would provide funding for both the Baldwin and Driscoll school projects. Now that we know the outcome of the override, the question of what to do with these two items that are currently in the budget motion. The advisory committee motion did not move either one of these projects, because they wanted to wait until after the outcome of the override. So the Board could choose to support the advisory committee's current motion and amend their vote as such. I wasn't sure whether or not this Board would want to move contingent language for these articles, so I provided draft votes in case the Board wanted to go in that direction, contingent on an override. So if an override, if contingent language was voted tonight, the Board would need to schedule an election, or a vote would need to happen by September 15th. Separately, the Board could also choose to deal with these items at a different town meeting, refile these as appropriation articles, and then subsequently schedule an election within a 90-day time period. So those are kind of the options in play around the Driscoll Involved Schools.
So no action along the lines of the advisory committee, contingent moving of these two items, those are our choices.
One or both, yes.
One or both.
Just to be clear, the advisory committee didn't take, they didn't recommend no action, they just took no...
They never moved them.
There's no motion.
So they spent two hours last week debating whether or not they should move them. It was 24, it was less than 24 hours after the override, so they really felt they wanted to understand the Board's position and the school committee's position with regard to these projects.
We wanted to understand their position. So anyone having thoughts?
I'm having a hard time processing this information.
And the idea of moving the appropriation conditional on an override election is really plain crap. There's so many moving parts that we have to sort of think through carefully, that I just don't see any reason to do that, in my view.
Well, and the September 15th date gives me a little bit of pause.
Where are you seeing that?
Melissa just said it, and it's in the...
It's a statutory date. Any contingent articles that are done as part of an annual town meeting, they have a date certain of September 15th. If a special town meeting had contingent language, you would have 90 days with which to have the vote taken.
Okay. So our two choices are to basically kind of say nothing regarding this, or try to build in some sort of contingency, even though we have no idea, like, what that could be, and we'd only have until September 15th to execute whatever.
So if the vote does not happen by September 15th, these articles are null.
And the vote is a town-wide referendum? I guess I personally would like some flexibility, even if we don't execute it. But I understand that those are...
Well, I, you know, for one thing, we don't know what number we would recommend if we did have a vote, and so it might not be this number. And then we would have to call another town meeting anyway to vote on a different number. It seems to me that until we know where we're going, until we know what the school committee's going to be recommending in terms of the meaning of dollars, using the agency, that we're, it makes more sense for us to vote no action now, and we can always call a special town meeting if we decide that's the direction we want to go. Could be a different number, could be, you know, a different design, could be, the school committee might recommend a different design, it could require schematic infusibility. There's so many possibilities, that I think it doesn't make sense at this point to vote something that may never happen, and may set up an expectation if something happened. I would rather people work toward what it is we're going to do, and...
What's is the resolution that Mr. Nanyan has, has also taken with these articles?
So I believe he's planning on filing it formally tomorrow. We do have a draft of it, which I didn't present, because I, you know, wasn't sure if it was going to change between now and when he files it. That would be something that the Board would be taking up the night of coming, with the process.
It's a resolution, it's not a, in a government... That doesn't change.
And it's a resolution to urge the Select Board, so obviously, the Select Board can do what it chooses.
But we'd be hamstringing ourselves if we voted not to do it right now, even with this resolution, that would be a possibility to consider.
Any point to call special town meeting, like, if the number you don't know, if you have no...
And they're meeting tonight, too, and so they're just having the same conversation as...
My problem with 180 million, $800,000, is that we get ten schools, or two classes out of that, and without a plan, and how we cover the other capacity needs, we're just not going away, not going away, it's been a huge amount of money, right after a vote, where many, not all, but many voted, voted actions after the vote. I mean, it's just been a bad, it could be viewed as a bad, to go forward, in such a sense, without having a plan for actual solutions or problems.
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, there are two different problems. One is the open enrollment problem, the other is the problem of, sort of, the need to also renovate Driscoll as part of this. And we heard from folks tonight that loud and clear that that's something that's needed, and that folks would fight for.
And as someone that sat on the Driscoll School Building Committee, one of the more, one of the surprises, at least for me, was that the teardown and building of a brand-new school was basically the same estimation as renovating, like, doing the necessary renovations.
Yeah, total renovation.
Yeah. So I, even if we were not to use it, I like to have a little bit of flexibility. Calling a special town meeting, we probably will do it anyway, but I would just like to not concern us on this.
Well, like Phil said, there's a lot of moving parts, I mean, there's Newberry, there's Lamonde, there's, you know, 1977 Harvard Baldwin, you know, to use existing buildings, you know, what's going to pop up at the last minute, and, you know, the school committee has still got to give it some sense of, you know, how they can deal with their situation of overcrowding in bad spaces. We don't have that, so.
Well, let's also not forget that there's always, almost always been a November special town meeting, so we could submit an article in November to take care of this, and call an override for earlier in the fall, or we could do it, I think we could do it in October, and then introduce the warrant article in November to appropriate the funds.
That's similar to what this...
Yes. So the calling of a special town meeting doesn't need to be off-cycle, we've already got a special town meeting that I can't imagine isn't going to happen.
Any other thoughts?
Just want to be clear, so Susan saying that voting, sort of moving this forward would mean that we, that an election would need to be held by September 15th, is that...
If it's not held by September 15th, the appropriations are null.
Essentially, do it all over again?
Essentially.
Okay. That's, I think, gives me a pause.
But it doesn't permit us to...
Well, we don't have the election.
Right.
So we're really, really under pressure to, you know, irrespective of whether we have, you know, a real understanding of where we're going, and, you know, what plans we have for...
I think it's worth pointing out that in the open letter, which I admit I don't have a copy in front of me, but I remember Mr. Nanyan's comments, like, we're having the override before the November 10th, it wasn't necessarily happening, so, to the extent that that influences any of that, I'd just point out.
So what is, can you just explain to me one more time, what is the process if we decide not to move this forward, and we decide later on that we want to bring this back? What's the process there?
So the advisory committee motion currently does not move the article, and they, they are usually the, they make the motion under the budget, so the Board would need to reconsider their vote under Article 9, and then move the advisory committee motion as listed in the combined reports.
Well, I think Rob's question was, what if we, what if we wanted to pursue the project at some other point?
Right, right.
We call a special town meeting and a special election.
In that order?
You can do it either order.
We have to call...
But if you do it, if you do a town meeting first, they give you a 90-day window.
Okay.
So just be aware of that, but you can do them in either order.
Instead of an election for, I mean, just pulling the number out of the pack, July 4th, we can do that, of course, and then have a town meeting to actually do the appropriations, so we can vote back at a later date.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't see us coming up with a plan that doesn't include us doing this anyway. And if, am I also correct in that we're appropriating just $108,800, but if we decided that we wanted to spend less than that, that would be, that would be fine?
That's a bond, I mean, it's based on the schematic design for a four-section school at Driscoll.
Okay.
And the plan may be a five-section school at Driscoll, or some variation other than a four-section school at every time.
Which makes the numbers could change.
Yeah.
Unless we have some, some other way of filling that capacity need, Driscoll's going to have to be a dividend than currently is for the plan to be.
I also think, I mean, this is, we're in the purview of the Using Agency, the school committee, who advise us about this, and they have a good advice, so, the AD could consider what kind of plans they can make, and what they intend to do, but, Mr. Green's comment at the beginning, that, you know, we're under a gun here in terms of the critical needs of our children, with special needs, and so the school committee needs to come up with a plan, in my view, to deal with that, and we don't know what that'll involve, and so I don't think, I think this is very premature, and we've just had... And we've just had an override vote for a school which would, a single site for the largest school. Significantly less than this, and significantly less than any of the other options we come up with. And the voters, basically, the vote, many of the voters I've talked to said, I don't want to have the tax in Driscoll. I'm not, you know, I'm not, it wasn't a question of Baldwin and Munderley and all these other things. You know, I'm sure that was true for some people. A large part of people don't want taxes. This would be a big tax reason for a small piece of town. So we have to think about how the board is going to handle that, you know, the board is going to figure that out. But I think at this point it's very premature.
I don't like the one that they have for options. And I'll just say that.
I'm not sure I see how that can be. You can only consider that if somebody in the school committee says, you have a plan and here's what you'd like to do. So I don't see that that as a limitation. And if we have to call a special town meeting anyway, we could talk about it then.
So, choice, the language of our vote is what?
So, the way that we framed the board's vote was we treated it as an amendment to the advisory committee motion. So you would need to reconsider your current position and then remove the amendment and support the article. Everything else.
Which is no action.
Yes.
So reconsider our vote.
Is this one where they voted no action or they took no action?
They didn't, they didn't make a motion, but the board did. The board would need to basically rescind their earlier motion.
And what was our earlier motion?
We moved.
You moved the appropriation.
Oh, the appropriation, right?
Yes.
So, I vote to reconsider the select board's moving of the appropriation for, can we vote schools together?
Yep, you can reopen that. I would just say that select board member Fernandez was not here, so he wouldn't be able to vote on the reconsideration piece. That just reopens the article.
Why wouldn't he be?
Because he didn't vote for the motion originally.
Yeah. I move reconsideration of our original motion to move two appropriations at Driscoll and Baldwin School. All in favor, Ms. Franco?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And, Chair votes, I'm sorry, Chair votes, yes. Okay, we're reconsidering. And now we are, what, moving the advisory committee?
So I'll move that we rescind our motion of items 67 and 69 under Article 9.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Excuse me, 67 and 69 or 67 and 68?
69 is clear, 67 and 68.
No, okay, I was looking at the memo, so I apologize.
So the substitute motion would, to not reconsider 67.
And move the contingent language or stick with the existing vote of the board?
I would not recommend the original language of the board since there's no funding source, so yes.
I'm amendable for that language.
So your motion is to move the contingent language for item 67 and rescind the board's previous, move, don't move item 68.
Okay, so I guess we vote first on the amendment, which is, we stated is to move item 67, which is Driscoll, the appropriation contingent on an override vote, which would occur within 90 days of a town meeting.
No, it's September 15th.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment, Ms. Franco?
No.
No.
Aye.
Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes, no. So, we're back to Mr. Franco's amendment, or not amendment, motion to rescind our appropriation vote as to items number 67 and 68. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Teller?
Aye.
No.
No.
Chair votes, aye. So that passes, and what do we do next?
Wait, we're now in line with the advisory.
So we don't, we don't have anything else to do?
Not in that particular.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it. Next, it's Newberry College acquisition. There's really nothing to vote on here until we get more information regarding where we are in the bidding process, so.
We may need someone to make a motion to postpone this item until either the second or third night of town meeting.
I move to be postponed until the second or third.
I don't think we should do that because we made a proposal to, to the college and they haven't responded yet. And that, and that motion includes a specific condition date on that.
Yeah, I think we just hold this item until our meeting a week, a week from tonight, immediately prior to town meeting, and hopefully we'll have more information to be able to take a vote.
Just remind the board that there's a 48-hour requirement to have motions in front of town meeting members. So any motion that's being made on the second night of town meeting would have to be in the aisles or at the Teller's checker station the night, first night of town meeting. Any motion for the third night of town meeting would need to be at the checker station on the second night of town meeting. Just to be mindful of those deadlines. And we had also talked to the, we could potentially extend the third night of town meeting to a different date. But at this point, it's a little too early in the process to determine whether or not we would need to do that.
Okay, Article 11, Brookline High School Project MBTA easement.
Yes, so Article 11, you should also have a memo from me on this. I sent town council home because I thought it was pretty easy enough to explain. Hopefully, I won't need Jonathan Simpson here for this. Essentially, the details of the easement have changed slightly, not substantially, essentially shrinking the area that the easement is needed. So there is a revised motion as part of the memo that I gave you. And there is also revised maps. And so we consulted with the moderator last week on this, on Friday. And because some of the verbiage of the actual motion is changing, the moderator just recommended that we reconsider and attach the new maps and the new language under the new motion that I prepared for you as part of my memo.
Okay. So I guess we're, I move to reconsider the original vote. So I move to reconsider, Ms. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Teller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Fernandez?
Is there something that I can write on?
No.
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
Just to reopen, but then you can participate in the article itself.
Okay, and Chair votes, aye. Now, next we vote to accept the revised motion.
Yes, that was presented by the deputy town administrator in your packet of papers.
So I move the revised motion under Article 11 as presented by the deputy town administrator, including new maps with respect to the location of the easement, right?
Correct.
It's not an expansion of easement, it's a shrinking of easement. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye.
Thank you. Article 20, there are some language nuances that the advisory committee voted under Article 20. So we just would need the board to come in line with the advisory committee language, nothing substantial. We had put a note in the combined reports that said the board would be looking at the advisory committee language and trying to reconcile and come along with them. So if you are looking at your combined reports, I believe Kate May also put this in the packet as well. The advisory committee motion is 20-8 and 40-9 of the combined reports. But I believe that may also be in the packet as well.
So what are the changes that the advisory committee made?
So I believe they just typed out some of the language that the advisory committee had included.
128 it has it there. The advisory committee made one change to the language of Article 20 as it appears in the warrant. Change addresses an inconsistency. It's around definitions. The proposed bylaw refers to restroom servicing the general public, but subsequently, the proposed bylaw indicates it applies to public building restrooms. There is a difference there.
Thank you.
And so to make the sections consistent, the advisory committee does change restroom serving the general public to public building restrooms.
And the petitioner is in support of this, understand this small change?
I believe so.
So it's fairly straightforward, move reconsideration of our original vote. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Teller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Fernandez?
Abstaining.
I'm sorry.
You're trying to be inclusive.
I'm trying to be inclusive, right.
We can vote on this now that it's reopened, so.
Right, it's reopened, yep.
And Chair votes, aye. So, move the advisory committee amendment to the warrant article. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Teller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes, aye.
Article 23, when we had met and talked about Article 23, I warned that there would likely be advisory committee edits because they had not seen the language that was prepared by staff. Advisory committee has since met and has also provided edits, essentially cleaning up the language as well, nothing substantial. Mel just passed out the advisory committee report, which will be included in the combined reports, which essentially explains their position on that article. And the petitioner is in favor of those changes, he's at the advisory committee hearing as well.
Okay, do we have to reconsider our previous vote or?
Yes, in order to come in line with the advisory committee.
Any questions or?
I would just like to, as a petitioner, co-petitioner, I would like to thank our new sustainability director on all the hard work that she put into helping us with this warrant article and get staff support, language buy-in. It made for a better warrant article.
So, move to reconsider our original vote on Article 23. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Teller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Abstaining.
I gave you an opportunity to say. And Chair votes, aye. Move the advisory committee amendment or recommendation. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Teller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Okay.
Article 26, more advisory committee tweaks. You can see on the combined reports, page 26-12 to 26-13 and 14. That's the advisory committee motion, I believe you should also have that in your packet. Advisory committee report on 26-13 lists the changes from the original warrant article, which essentially is in the third, the last resolved clause, where an independent was struck. And then there's additional language that was added, that the consultant will employ to the aspect of the gear process, including working with appropriate kind of person, and then the words, as of the supervising body in the fifth line up, have been struck.
Okay, we have to reconsider again? Any questions or comments? Move reconsideration of Article 26, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Teller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Abstaining.
The Chair votes, aye. Okay, Article 27, open apology.
We have to, we have to vote to change.
Trying to get out of here. Okay, I move Article 26 as amended by the advisory committee, resolution of Rachel Equity's study. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye.
Article 27, the current position of the advisory committee is no action. The petitioner is moving the language in the words of the article, he filed that today. And I believe you have in your binder a draft of a resolution that was contemplated by the board at the time of the article review, but has not been moved. So you don't really have anything other than the original article in terms of a motion right now.
Okay, so how do we deal with this? You're looking at me.
I, I would feel comfortable moving the language that I believe you as, you as a select board member could stab at.
Yeah, I helped with the draft.
Okay.
So that should be in your binder, because everything that's been reviewed as part of the warrant article was regarded in the binder. You could say something, BG at the top.
Yeah, yeah. Are you moving your article or moving?
Your article!
Yes. Mr. Frank, so I, and I helped.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Offner. Oh, no, okay, got it.
An amendment.
I believe that there may be additional motions filed tomorrow under this article at this point, though I don't have any.
We can only vote on what's before us.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
Would this, would we also, if so, vote on Mr. Offner's warrant article or?
Oh, someone voted it?
Yeah, okay, separately, yeah.
You could do a substitute motion and say the original warrant article language.
Okay, I'd like to do that.
So, okay, how are we gonna do this?
We could make a, give a main motion if the select person tells Ms. Hamilton. I would treat Mr. Fernandez's.
A substitute.
A substitute motion.
Pardon?
I'm just thinking about your. Yes, the one with the B green edits, reflect the language on the top.
But then, I will just move the.
The original.
Yeah, as it was submitted.
We should probably vote on that first.
Okay, so, we think this through, I mean, because three of us are targets of litigation, we're going to have to abstain, so, with that in mind, I move the original Offner's language. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Abstain.
Abstain.
No.
Yes.
Chair, one, one, no, one, one, three, motion fails. So, next, move the amended language of Mr.
The Hamilton motion.
The Hamilton motion, right. Amendment by Soyez, Salmon, with my edit. Move that, Mr. Franco?
Abstain.
Ms. Hamilton, or Ms. Heller?
Abstain.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair abstains. So, two, zero, three, motion fails.
Article 28, the advisory committee had made some changes to the petitioner's motion. The petitioner is moving her article in the, and the words of the original motion. I think she had a slight modification to one word that the moderator was going to take at the floor, but essentially, it's the same language as was filed. So, the board either has the advisory committee motion or the petitioner's here to speak to this as well.
Tia, could you, you know, come forward and just, explain your reason for opposing the advisory committee motion? And by the way, Melissa, so as I recall, the select board voted.
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote, right.
We didn't vote on it.
So, I just want to point out that I made a mistake in the title when I revised it. I was so focused on providing footnotes that I left the word "changing" in it. Changing has nothing to do with this. I mean, that's a potential.
We can cross that out.
You can cross it, and that's what the moderator's going to talk about. So, I was before you before with this. So, I guess I'll just get to why I disagree with the advisory committee. There seemed to be some doubt about the historical whereas clauses that I had. That's why it took quite a bit of time to actually hunt up the footnotes for it. Even then, I think they probably wouldn't believe them, so they essentially wiped out the historical clauses and replaced it with something that is, is not really strong enough, I think. And, you know, if you read some of their comments, I find in their report is a bit objectionable, too. So, but anyway, and, you know, saying that I was criticizing the native figure because it was a composite, that's not what I said. I mean, what I said is that the native figure is a composite, and here is what makes it up. They also were talking about flags. I don't know what that has to do with them. They were talking about the statue in front of the MFA, which is the Appeal to the Great Spirit, or whatever it's called, and equating this with the current seal with art, which it is. I mean, there's a whole article written about how this was obtained, but I think the various parts of that figure are certainly troublesome. I also find the sword over the head of the native person troublesome, and it's just not me. The, there are multiple Native American groups within the greater Boston area and the state that object to this rendering of it. And, and then, you know, there was some comment about they didn't think that it was derogatory. There was also a comment, "I'm indigenous, I was born and raised in Brookline." I mean, I find these comments and that sort of attitude troublesome, and I'm very much opposed to taking historical, these historical clauses out of it. I think they're important. I think they're things that people need to know. This is a resolution, by the way. This is in support of legislation that's in the state legislature, that two of our representatives, who represent us in the state legislature, support. One's a sponsor, one's a co-sponsor. And I don't, you know, this is, that's my, essentially my objections.
So, if it's not changing the word itself, what should it be?
What? No, it's, it's just in support.
Formation of a commission.
Of this commission forming that will look at and make recommendations. But, I just wanted to have it be what the title of the state bill is, that it's the formation of this commission, and it also then goes into who's going to be on the commission, different representatives from different groups. And unfortunately, that bill is not, and the whole bill is not, and the combined reports is just the first page of it. You can go up if you want to.
Okay, any other comments? I guess my comment is that I always react to warrant articles or other things on any number of topics that use recitals to sort of make points in a fast and clear way, many times I think here, that really don't, that really detract from the substance of the resolution. In this case, I could nitpick you on the recitals. I think that the bottom line is that this is just calling for support for the creation of a special commission that the legislature is going to do anyway, so I don't see really any.
Well, hopefully, they will. I mean, this has been there for seventeen sessions of the legislature. This is the eighteenth when it's been introduced. So, it never made it out of committee. I'm hoping it'll make it out of committee, and that's part of the reason I'm filing this warrant article, so that people will know that County Brookline supports the creation of the commission.
And one of the sponsors is our new state representative, Nika Elizardo, who, you know, is, I mean, she represents, her district includes a small piece of Brookline.
Yes.
And a large area of Boston, but she really is committed to the entire district, including Brookline. I don't know if that's relevant to this discussion, but I just want to give a shout out to our new representative, who is really going to be a great supporter for the town. She's always a great representative.
To say nothing of our other newly elected representative, who represents most of Brookline, Tommy Potolo.
Yes.
Who's a co-sponsor.
Oh, I didn't, okay, yes.
Yeah, Nika's the sponsor, I mean, this is how it works. You get sponsors, they put it out, and then they have two weeks to get co-sponsors.
Got you. Any other comments? So, we didn't take any action before, right?
Correct.
We're waiting on advisory, I think. Full advisory. I think this.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Or so I guess.
I'm not quite sure why they moved the whereas clauses.
I'm not quite sure why they moved the whereas clauses. I like the original petitioner's version.
So, I move the original petitioner's version of Article 28. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Heller, I'm sorry. Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
All right. Hold on. Oh, that's the end of our warrant.
One of the people you were going to interview is here, who didn't get the message until just late this evening. I don't know if you're willing.
Would you like to step up, Conquest, and subject yourself to our cross-examination? We'll see. Just kidding. I don't want to see that on social media, okay? So, tell us, we know you, so, tell us whatever you think is important addition to what we already know.
My apologies.
In your interest in this committee.
My apologies. I didn't find out about this until, I don't know, it was like nine o'clock. I, there were three or four messages left on my answering machine, but they were all garbled, so it's possible that someone maybe tried to call and it didn't come through clearly on my answering machine.
No apologies, Mr. Conquest, you're here.
Okay, so, you tell me. Go ahead.
Why do you want to be on the committee?
Well, first of all, in foremost, I went to college with twenty-five Native Americans, and have served with them for about twenty-five years with an organization called NALM, Native African Asian Latino American. And I'm committed to uplifting and supporting things related to Native Americans. The second thing, my daughter, a graduate of Brookline High School, Georgetown, Yale, worked on a Indian reservation, two Indian reservations, Native American, Indian, Native American, both. And the third piece, I was, and I think this is the main reason, I was horrified at the way the advisory committee treated our guests, our Native American guests, when they came to support the warrant article at the advisory committee. It was horrible, absolutely disgraceful, that we would, irregardless of whether they're Native American or not, we would treat another human being in that manner that I saw, and I'm embarrassed myself for not speaking up at the time. I did write a letter to the moderator, sort of expressing my horrifying at the way those women were treated. And we need to do better at how we interact with just human beings in general. So, in that sense, I want to be a part of this committee to show them, and by the way, I go to the Indigenous Peoples' demonstration, or whatever, for Day of Mourning at Park Street. And they mentioned this at their meeting, how they were treated here in Brookline. Looked to whatever the numbers that were present. Boy, it's two years in a row that I've heard them say that. And so, that's another reason that I want to be a part of this committee, to let them know that all people in Brookline are not as rude, disrespectful, and hateful with the treatment that they experienced when they came here. And they can attest to this. They won't even come back to Brookline. They won't join the committee for that reason. So, those.
Won't be able to answer any other questions, I'd be more than. What do you envision Indigenous Peoples' celebration day?
To, for us, or to, for them to educate us about who they are, okay? This is, once upon a time, this was their land, and we've stolen their land, okay? And who they are today, and some of the problems that they face as Native Americans, Indians, still, anybody ever heard of Heinrich Reservation? Okay? Heinrich, one of the poorest communities in the country, next to East Harlem, which is where I'm originally from. So, and what we can do as a community here in Brookline to support them in uplifting the next generation of Native Americans in this, in the greater, in the greater Boston area, what we can learn from them, what they can teach us, how we can change the image of how we view Native Americans, you know, even today, you see it on TV, you see it in the movies, that we portray them as uncivilized, really uncivilized people, and yet we still, anyway, that's, I had a film, showed a film, what was the name of the, it was an uprising over the pipeline. I showed that film to students at Brookline High School, very powerful. Anyway, so, we're here.
Any other questions? Who are going to be voting tonight? Last half minute, just ten minutes. On the Indigenous People's Celebration Day Committee membership? Thank you.
You're welcome, okay? Thank you very much. I'm sorry that I didn't get you.
Okay, so, Mr. Franco?
Yes, yeah, just for your benefit, Mr. Fernandez, it's the way that the board traditionally takes votes on appointments, is that they ask me to call the role of the applicants and then you take a voice vote, so. So, I'm going to take a role on the Indigenous Peoples' Celebration Day Committee, so I will say the name, and then you'll vote yea or nay.
How many seats do we have?
We have, we have, yeah, I don't think there's a limit in this particular committee.
And by the way, the other thing, we're going to vote on, one person for the Surveillance and Military Equipment Study Committee.
So, there are two applicants that I'm going to name, we can vote, you can vote for both. So, for the Indigenous Peoples' Celebration Day Committee, Larry Oney.
Aye.
Arthur Conquest.
Aye.
Okay, so, Mr. Oney and Mr. Conquest are appointed to the committee. And now, for the Surveillance Technology and Military Type Equipment Study Committee, there's one applicant up for consideration, Amy Hummer.
Aye.
And she's appointed as well.
Great. Fun, 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 how does that end it?
That concludes our business?
That concludes our business.
All right, thank you.
Were those the magic words I failed to say?
Next Tuesday at the high school.
Well, yes, start of town meeting.